Good afternoon. As we're getting assembled, I want to call to order the Board of Supervisors meeting, the afternoon session for the March 21st, 2017. And I want to thank all of you who've come to join with us this afternoon for both the report backs with a number of recommendations and obviously consideration of any comments from you members of the public in addition to those that we've received over the past several weeks since we last heard this items or portions of it at a joint session with the City Council on January 31st. And so with that being said, let's go ahead and call the roll, Madam Clerk, and establish a quorum, and then we'll get started with the afternoon session.
Okay. Good afternoon. Supervisors Frost?
Here.
Kennedy?
Here.
Peters?
Here.
Serna?
Here.
Natoli?
Here.
And you have a quorum.
Okay, great. Before we get started, call the items, I do want to note that many of you have been here in the past, but if you, in the event you haven't, would, if you wish to address the board on items either 51, 52, or 53, two of those are related to the homeless issue and the reports back. But any item on the agenda would ask you please spell out a speaker identification form, looks like this, and make sure that the clerk of the board gets that and she'll get it to me and we'll call upon you at the time we take the public comments on this item, or on these items. And so with that, we're going to go ahead and I'm going to have the clerk call both items 51 and 52. We're going to have the report on 51, and then any comments and questions from board members, and then likewise, we'll go ahead and take 52 as a part of that, but because there may be some bleed over in the public testimony or comments here, rather than have folks come to the podium twice and have to, you know, return, we'll go ahead and we'll put those together and we'll consider the action at the end of the, of the public comment period at a point in time when the board's ready to consider some motions on the items that are before us. And so I don't know, is there anything else you want to add, Madam Clerk?
No, you didn't.
Okay.
Perfect.
So with that, just go ahead and call the items and we'll get started.
Okay. For item 51, you're acting as the Sacramento Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento. It's serving the homeless with Housing Authority resources, authorization and acceptance of the Performance Partnerships Pilots for Disconnected Youth grant and reservation of 100 Housing Choice vouchers for program participants. Receive and file the written report for the award of 75 Veteran Affairs Supportive Housing Vouchers to house homeless veterans in Sacramento. For item 52, you're acting as the Board of Supervisors. This is the County of Sacramento Initiatives to Reduce Homelessness.
Okay. With that, Mr. Gill, before you start, anything else you want to add to process for this afternoon?
No, I think it's been outlined.
Okay, very good. Okay. With that, then I'll turn to our folks from Sacramento Housing Development Agency to, to give their report back. And it's been a busy several weeks for agency staff and certainly for the community as a whole, and many folks have participated in the, in the outreach. And so again, you're here today with your presentations and thank you so much, certainly to LaShelle and to others who've worked on this. And with that, we'll go ahead and get started.
Well, good afternoon, Chair Natoli, and the members of the County Board of Supervisors. I'm Tyrone Roderick Williams, Director of Development at SHRA and Director of the Sacramento Promise Zone. The Performance Partnership Pilot Initiatives Program, better known as P3, enables pilot sites to test innovative, outcome-focused strategies to achieve significant improvements in educational, employment, and other key outcomes for disconnected youth and using flexibility to blend existing federal resources and to seek waivers associated with program requirements. On August the 15th, 2016, the U.S. Department of Education, Department of Labor, and Department of Human Services jointly issued a notice of funding availability announcing funding of approximately $2 million for the P3 pilot program for local communities to develop pilot programs targeting issues related to disconnected youth. SHRA, the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento, as the lead applicant, in partnership with local partners submitted an application targeting youth who were homeless, at risk of homelessness, aging, out of foster care, on probation, and the notice of funding availability indicated that Promise Zones would receive preference consideration. This year, on January 29th, the Department of Education informed SHRA that it was a finalist in the application process and that upon executing the partnership agreement, the Housing Authority of the County of Sacramento would be awarded $248,799 over a three-year period. As proposed, the Sacramento P3 program is a three-year comprehensive service delivery system that coordinates and integrates a multidisciplinary approach to providing services to 100 disconnected youth ages 16 to 24, especially targeting foster youth, youth on probation, homeless youth, and youth at risk of becoming homeless. The program adopts a housing-first model to promote stability for the participants. The federal regulation waivers that are granted under this program are designed to increase efficiency of service delivery in two ways, by removing barriers to housing and expanding housing eligibility and leveraging existing services and increasing services to the target population. The program is based on a collaboration with local and state partners and in cooperation with funded services. The program does not provide funding for social services. These services are included, case management will be provided by community partners. Through the collaboration of key partners, the 100 program participants will achieve measurable outcomes in education, employment, and housing that will help support them in their path to self-sufficiency. That concludes the report on the pilot P3 program.
Okay. Tyrone, and maybe LaShelle, just to help clarify, we jumped right in with the pilot P3. Was there a, is there a certain sequence to the order of presentation here? Because you have a number of actions that are considered and, and we didn't really have any introductory comments about kind of how we got here today. So that might be helpful to frame, to frame this a bit. Again, Tyrone did a good job in delivering this, including the staff report, but maybe that would-
Yes.
-put a little context behind all of this, so if you could-
Yes, I just wanted to, to follow up and give some context. The part of the report that we will be presenting, and Sarah's going to present in just a second, really gives the whole comprehensive overview of all of the recommendations that SHRA is making regarding how we align our resources, our Housing Authority resources. One of those components is the Performance Partnership Grant, which is what Mr. Williams just talked about. And so it really kind of feeds into the overall report.
Okay.
But we needed to give some context that that is a report that has to be approved by the board. So we wanted to take them together. But I think it would be useful for us to then go through Sarah's report and then talk about the sequencing of how we do the approvals.
Okay. Well, yeah, thank you for that background. I think that, again, kind of ties it back to the recommended actions here today and certainly the vouchers for the homeless youth and how that will, you know, be monitored, but certainly the funding came down through HUD for that, so.
Absolutely. So now, if it's okay.
Yeah. Anybody, let me ask, any questions for, for Mr. Williams before you? Okay, good. All right, Tyrone, you're off the hook easy. Stand by, though. All right.
Okay. So now I'm going to have Sarah come up from our office and she's going to give the presentation on aligning our Housing Authority resources. So if Sarah could come, but just before she does, I just really would like to just say that we have had an opportunity to talk to a lot of stakeholders and a lot of groups, some of which you'll hear today, and also go out and meet with all of the different cities and jurisdiction city managers and do presentations. So it really was very useful and it helped inform our final recommendation. And we are delighted that we were able to craft something that really meets the needs of all the individuals here within Sacramento County. And we're going to go into some more detail. Sarah will walk you through, and if you have any other questions, we're available for, for those.
Okay, good. Thank you, LaShelle. Appreciate that. Okay. Good afternoon, Sarah.
Thank you, LaShelle. Good afternoon, Chairperson Natoli and members of the board. My name is Sarah Thomas and I'm with the Housing Choice Voucher Program at SHRA. I am here before you this afternoon to share staff's overall recommendations to house homeless households utilizing Housing Authority resources. To provide some context, during the past year, the county and city have been working diligently to develop strategic recommendations with the goal of improving the homeless delivery system to produce better outcomes for persons experiencing homelessness. SHRA is a critical partner to these efforts, and we have been working closely with the county and city to align Housing Authority resources. After the January 24th board meeting and subsequently the joint county-city meeting on January the 31st, SHRA staff was tasked to meet with community stakeholders and the incorporated cities in the county to seek input of options to house the homeless using Housing Authority resources. This is our report back on SHRA's recommendations based on the community feedback, meetings with the incorporated cities within the county, consultations with HUD Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity Office, or FHEO, and HUD Public and Indian Housing Department under which our Housing Authority programs reside.
I have a question.
Sure.
You mentioned you had meetings in the incorporated cities. Did you not have any meetings in the largest jurisdiction in the county, which is the unincorporated area?
Oh, we did too, as well.
Nice to mention that, though.
Okay. I would like to start, first start by providing some context for our recommendations specifically related to the Housing Authority programs we are considering to utilize to house homeless individuals and families. Two of the largest programs under the Housing Authority umbrella are the HCV and Public Housing Programs. Through both programs, we provide a roof over the heads of approximately 50,000 residents on a daily basis. Of the residents we serve through both programs, 76% of the families have a female head of household, 56% have a disabled family member, 28% have an elderly member in the household, 45% are families with children, 77% are extremely low-income families. The average income on both programs is $13,800 annually for a family of three, or a little over $1,000 a month. We serve the hardest-to-house families who but for our program would be homeless or at high risk of being imminently homeless. Both programs are fully leased up and there is approximately 800 turnover vouchers and units per year. It is these turnover vouchers that is being considered to house homeless individuals and families. On January 24th, we brought forward four options to consider to house the homeless for both public housing and HCV. They are the general homeless preference, the limited allocation of vouchers to house the homeless, a site-specific allocation or project-based allocation, and the move-on allocation. In addition to presenting these options and receiving initial feedback from you, since that meeting, SHRA held nine workshops with community stakeholders and also met with the unincorporated cities in the county to receive their feedback as well. We contacted over 800 interested parties, and the stakeholders included public housing residents, affordable housing developers, homeless advocates, the general public, nonprofits, applicants on the waiting list, landlords, service providers, neighborhood groups, and many others. Close to 200 stakeholders attended the meetings and we received over 100 written comments. Most felt that homeless households need to be served and they must be linked to services. The general consensus was that we need more affordable housing. On the flip side, there was concern about resident safety and attracting homeless from outside our jurisdiction. Many applicants who have been waiting for a long time shared with us that they are homeless and are desperately needing housing. We also heard the request to relook at the definition of homelessness, which we are reevaluating at this time. As mentioned earlier, we also met with the unincorporated cities in the county, including the cities of Folsom, Ayleton, Galt, Citrus Heights, Elk Grove, and Rancho Cordova. The general feedback was that they all agree we need to have housing solutions for the homeless and households should have access to services.
Sarah, if I just could, I just want to make sure the nomenclature, because you said the unincorporated cities, they're either the incorporated cities or the unincorporated communities, but you can't be a city unless you're incorporated, so.
Incorporated cities.
So incorporated cities, and then also Demis Peters-
And, and the unincorporated county.
Yeah, unincorporated areas, communities in the unincorporated. Okay, I just want to be clear. Okay, thanks. Sorry.
The general feedback was that they all agree we need to have housing solutions for the homeless and households should have access to services. They also acknowledged the need for more affordable housing. However, they also wanted to make sure that families off the waiting list are served. In addition to individual meetings with city staff, the city councils of Elk Grove and Rancho Cordova voted on this topic during their council meetings. The city of Elk Grove was in favor of allocating 50% of their turnover vouchers to homeless households for the limited preference move-on vouchers and project-based vouchers. The city of Rancho Cordova was in favor of assisting 1,755 homeless households. They were in favor of a 50-50 split of utilizing the vouchers for homeless households versus families off the waiting list. They also wanted to make sure that the homeless households are matched with the appropriate level of services. Parallel to the community engagement that we conducted, as requested by the council, by the board and council, staff also consulted with the HUD Office of Fair Housing and Equal Opportunity to ensure that we were not creating a disparate impact to protected classes who are on our waiting list. We shared our participant and applicant demographic data, which was analyzed in conjunction with homeless data from the 2015 point-in-time count that was independently gathered by HUD. As we continued our conversation with HUD, they informed us that because the wait lists are not exhausted, dedicating all turnover vouchers and units to serve the homeless would create an adverse impact to female heads of households, families with children, and minorities, specifically blacks and Asians, who are on the waiting lists. HUD also stated that more than 70% of the applicants and over 60% of participants have incomes less than $1,100 a month, which is less than the average median rent in Sacramento. And, but for the housing assistance programs, these families would be homeless. Staff was given a lot of information to digest from the stakeholder meetings and the consultations with HUD, Fair Housing, and the cities. During this timeframe, SHRA was also awarded two grants to serve homeless youth and veterans. As you just heard from Tyrone Roderick Williams, the first grant we are the finalist for is the Performance Partnership Pilots for Disconnected Youth, or P3 for short, that will serve 100 homeless or at risk of homeless youth, linking them with vouchers and services. The second is the award of 75 HUD project-based vouchers to serve veterans through the VASH program that was competitively sought after and received from HUD to add affordable housing units to serve homeless veterans. Information about this award is provided to you in your packet under the same agenda item. With all the information from the stakeholders and receipt of these two grants, staff developed a three-year multifaceted plan that was mindful of preserving the utilization of public housing units and vouchers to maximize funding from HUD and also ensuring that homeless individuals and families are served, yet balancing this approach with serving those on our waiting list who have been waiting a long time. Our recommendation is to house up to 150 homeless individuals and families through the limited preference option for a three-year period for a total of up to 450 households, where they enter the intake process through the county's Flexible Supports Rehousing Program, or FSRP for short. Details of the FSRP program will be presented to you shortly, next on your agenda, by your Director of Homeless Initiatives, Cindy Cavanagh. The intent of the program is to rehouse homeless individuals and families and through special engagement with the Whatever It Takes model, link them to wraparound services including intensive case management and housing location services. Funding for this initiative is estimated at $7,800 per household, or $1.2 million for 150 individuals and families for the first year. We are working closely with county staff to develop this program to create a seamless process for our families. As it relates to project-based vouchers, while it is critical to serve homeless individuals and families off our streets immediately, it is just as important to develop a long-term strategy to add affordable housing units to our inventory. Currently, we have 673 project-based vouchers at eight developments around the city and county of Sacramento, and it is a model that works well for some families. Homeless individuals and families have units to move into and have access to services onsite to remain stabilized. Examples of such projects are Mather Veterans Village Phase 1 in the city of Rancho Cordova and 7th and H Development down the street here from us. For this initiative, staff recommends the allocation of 375 vouchers for additional project-based units, of which 75 were just allocated to veteran housing. As part of the rollout, staff recommends issuing a notice of funding availability to allocate up to 100 project-based vouchers on an annual basis, ensuring that individuals and families also have access to services as well. In addition, based on past experiences, we believe that adding permanent supportive housing projects typically leverages additional units, which we estimate to be approximately- 300 units over a three-year period. This is not a hard and fast number, just a goal of what may be anticipated. We also want to be mindful that while building new units is critical and is our priority, we cannot forget the need to preserve existing homeless units, many of which may be in jeopardy of losing existing financing. We are currently in the process of revising our project-based voucher strategy that will be brought forward in the next few months. Input from affordable housing developers and other stakeholders will be taken into consideration as the policy is being revised. Upon revising the strategy and receiving your approval, we anticipate releasing a notice of funding availability shortly after later this year. Transitioning to the move-on program, this is a program to help homeless individuals and families move on from intense services utilizing a permanent supportive housing unit to receiving an HCV voucher and living more independently. Having met with service providers serving homeless households in Sacramento, we know that there are some homeless who could relinquish their intensive case management services but still need help paying the rent. It is this limited subpopulation of homeless families, up to 50 families, that is being recommended to utilize the HCV voucher and free up a permanent supportive housing unit for a homeless household. Like the limited homeless allocation, the move-on program must be developed with the assistance of partners prior to being launched. As mentioned earlier by Mr. Williams, the P3 program will increase the flexibility to house a total of 100 homeless or at-risk homeless youth, and the goal is to have the program launched in May where youth are connected to services and attain housing through the voucher program. As it relates to the public housing program, per the city's request, staff is recommending the city turnover inventory of up to 160 units be allocated to house the homeless for a three-year period, which totals 480 units. We are still working through the details, especially in light of the HUD-FHEO findings, and will have a rollout of our implementation plan shortly. We believe that services must be available to homeless public housing residents as they need help being stabilized. In addition, assistance with security deposits, purchasing furniture, mental health assistance, and much more is also needed. On February 21st, at the city council meeting, Mayor Steinberg identified 5 million of city resources available for services, leveraging additional funds totaling up to $40 million. SHRA staff looks forward to working closely with city staff to identify options for public housing residents to receive supportive services utilizing some of the city funds that have been recently identified. County public housing units are not recommended to serve homeless at this time, as the rehabilitation of the Twin Rivers Development, which is owned by the County Housing Authority, will affect the availability of public housing units for occupancy. In addition to the proposal.
Sarah, excuse me just one second, I think Mr. Serna had a question here.
Yeah, just before you leave the slide there, Sarah, I just want to make sure you explain the double asterisks for the folks that may be watching at home or those in the audience.
The double asterisk was just to say that those are the additional leverage units that I mentioned, those are the 300 units that may be leveraged over time with the projects that are created through the project-based vouchers. Thank you.
Okay, Ms. Peters?
Yeah, thank you. Sarah, on the public housing vouchers, you say the city council, assuming that's Sacramento City Council.
Yes.
Wanted you to turn over the vouchers for public housing, then you state that HUD advises that there's an adverse impact to that action, but you don't really explain how that would come about.
Well, because at this time, we still have to work and continue our consultations with the HUD Fair Housing Office to really understand what the implications are going to be. We just received the information from Fair Housing recently, and so we need to continue our consultations with them. What we do know that is that there is a disparate impact to families with children, females head of households, and minorities.
Yeah, I understand that part, but you just, I see 160-voter vouchers in that column, and yet the written word here in the staff report says that that's pretty, that HUD doesn't want us to do that.
Just if I could, LaShel Dozier here. One of the things that we're looking at and talking to HUD about is, you know, how do these programs ramp up, you know, how many units will actually be allocated, and then they will be looking at our entire program over the course of not just the city but also the county units as well. Because even though we are two different housing authorities, they did evaluate all of our data, so we're not dedicating the homeless units that, the homeless public housing units that are in the county, and so that's a part of how they will consider and take a look at what impacts that might have.
So you're going to use the county vouchers to offset the city vouchers being dedicated to homeless, is that what you're saying?
No, there's a, the difference here is that there's, the vouchers are different than the public housing units, so the 160 you see are our hard public housing units.
Okay, well, units rather than vouchers, I guess, but the question is still the same, because HUD is saying that that is, would have an adverse impact and could have a financial impact on whoever does that.
If we dedicated all of our public housing units, and we're saying that we're not dedicating all of our public housing units, we're only dedicating the public housing units in the city, not the public housing units in the county, so the 160 that you see there is not the total universe of all of the public housing units.
I think the next slide actually helps.
All right.
Go to the next slide and let's see, are you still working on this one or go to the next slide and maybe finish answering the question, I think, might be helpful.
Just one more comment before we go to the next slide. In addition to the proposal for the turnover units shown in this slide, we are also recommending that once the HCV tenant-based waitlist is exhausted, a homeless preference is added in parity with rent burden to provide equal access to homeless individuals and families and those on the verge of homelessness. We anticipate exhausting this particular list by the end of this year or early next year.
Well, since that was your last comment, I was going to ask about it later, but since you just made that point, and I want to come back to the question Ms. Peters had, but so with a waiting list as lengthy as it's been described, how is it you're going to exhaust that by, in the calendar year, basically nine months out, how does that happen?
The 70,000 families that we have, individuals and families that we have on all of our waiting lists, that is the combination of 11 waiting lists together. The waiting list that I'm talking about specifically is the tenant-based waitlist, it's not project-based, it's the one where they can find a unit anywhere in Sacramento County. That list has been closed for a while, and we had put a few years ago 5,000 families on that list, so that particular list will be exhausted.
Then how many remain on the list, then?
There would be still the remaining on all the other waiting lists.
No, no, but how many remain on the list that you say is going to be exhausted by the end of the year? What's the least-in-time count, you got 2,000 left, 500 left?
Yeah, we have about 3,000 or so left, and we will be pulling those families.
So you're confident that you're going to be able to work through that list? Is there going to be some other rabbit in the hat here? I'm kind of curious about that, I mean, it's, I mean, maybe that's, again, I understand your concept here, you're going to, you know, give equal preference at some juncture, but you really think it's practical at the end of this year, is that realistic?
That is a possibility. I think the biggest, the bigger issue for us is what happens at the federal government in terms of funding. If our funding really takes a turn, then no, we're not going to be able to go through that entire list. We will be struggling to really make sure that the people who are currently housed stay housed. If our funding is fine and we don't have any other issues, then we'll continue that process until it is exhausted, and so that could be the end of the year, it could be next year, but basically the bottom line is, at the point that it's exhausted is when we will have that discussion.
Okay, well, that's what you said in the staff report, I think we put a timeframe to it, I just wanted to be, again, if people, the takeaway here is when the list is exhausted in a foreseeable amount of time, then you will, you know, equalize the preferences, so. Okay, so I know Ms. Peters still had a pending question, maybe this slide begins to address it, so continue, Sarah, and we'll see if it, and then Mr. Kennedy after that, so.
Patrick.
What do you want, okay, Patrick, yeah.
Yeah, just.
Yeah, sure.
Thank you, Ms. Chair, just to follow up on the chair's question, just to clarify, just a point of clarification. The 70,000 families that we hear about on the 11 lists, I've heard it both ways, so I want it just clear here now, are those duplicated, are those unduplicated?
Those are the unduplicated.
Okay, thank you.
So to summarize the table, our recommendations before you will house up to 1,755 homeless individuals and families over a three-year period. This includes serving homeless veterans, youth, adding affordable housing units, and freeing up permanent supportive housing units, and it also allows us to serve individuals and families off of our waiting list, so we aren't creating a disparate impact on minorities, female heads of households, female heads of households and families with children. Approximately 50% of the turnover vouchers in HCV will serve the homeless, and 50% will serve individuals and families off the waiting list, some of which are homeless, with an 80-20 split for public housing units.
Sarah, just one moment, Ms. Supervisor Frost, did you have a question on one of these points?
I just wanted to clarify what Supervisor Kennedy was clarifying, because I'm not sure I understood it. Did you, were you asking if there are duplicates on the 11 lists, are there duplications on those lists, like they might be on a veteran list and also on a homeless list, and so you were clarifying that they are not duplicated?
That is correct. The numbers are actually a lot more than 70,000, but we estimate that 70,000 of those that are on the waiting list are unduplicated.
So if we, in essence, start another list, a priority homeless list, is that not duplicated also, because we already have homeless people on our other lists?
They could technically be on our waiting list as well as get onto the new list.
So there would, there could be duplications, they get on two lists, basically?
They could with the homeless preference.
And that's not a fair housing question?
Just to clarify, the 70,000 people who are unduplicated is when we went through all of the list and took out those people who were on more than one list, you can be on more than one list. So we took out those people who were, so we wouldn't double count, and so that's how the 70,000 is taking into account people who are on multiple lists, but only counting them once.
But as LaShel was saying, the family can be on more than one list at a time. They could, they could have their name on a list for public housing as well as on a list for HCV, however, the number we are giving you is an unduplicated list.
Okay, thank you.
Before we can embark on implementing these recommendations before you, we must first follow through with our administrative processes. Upon receiving your approval today, we will amend our administrative documents and have a 45-day comment period for the public to comment on the proposed changes that are placed in our plans. We will continue to consult with HUD Fair Housing during this process to ensure that we avoid any adverse impacts to protected individuals and families on our waiting lists. Once the 45-day comment period ends, staff will finalize the administrative documents based on community feedback, and we will bring it back to you for approval. Once your approval is received, the documents are sent to HUD for final approval. HUD has up to 75 days to review the documents. HUD will not only be reviewing our policies thoroughly but also our public participation process that guided the proposed changes in preferences. Simultaneously, while we are waiting for final approval from HUD, staff will also be working closely with our partners to align resources and systems to implement the various While we are continuing to align our resources, it is important to keep in mind that all initiatives are predicated on having adequate funding for our programs. Our president's just released a skinny fiscal year 2018 budget, which, when all is said and done, could impact many HUD programs. Currently, we don't have a fiscal year 2017 budget and are working off a continuing resolution. Here in Sacramento, as of late February, we were informed of a 5% cut in funding for rental subsidies for the next six months, which is a reduction of approximately $2.5 million from January through June. We currently have financial reserves to cover this shortfall, however, any additional cuts may impact the rollout of these new initiatives. Given the volatility of the federal budget, it is imperative for us to look at local options to fund homeless initiatives. Options for consideration include devoting a portion of the Boomerang funds on an ongoing basis to add new units to serve the homeless. We should also consider creating a local tenant-based rental assistance program, especially to serve homeless families and individuals who may not qualify for federal rental assistance programs. We also recommend looking at creating new permanent supportive housing with the conversion of motels and multifamily developments. Also similar to the Bay Area Transit-Oriented Affordable Housing Fund and other such initiatives in Los Angeles and Denver, Sacramento should develop a Transit-Oriented Development Fund that will aid in land assembly and financing that is critical to leveraging other resources, such as the Golden State Acquisition Fund and the Affordable Housing Sustainable Communities Funds from the state of California. These funds are resources that have not yet been utilized in Sacramento, that could facilitate the development of new affordable housing in high-opportunity areas with access to services and amenities for lower-income populations such as the homeless. Also, like in San Francisco and Los Angeles, Sacramento should explore a local bond measure to use a portion of the property taxes or sales taxes to construct and rehabilitate housing units for the homeless. To summarize, staff recommends a program mix that addresses the fairness embedded in serving the entire spectrum of resident needs with our limited resources. Through these recommendations, we are able to prioritize homeless individuals and families for housing, yet serve those who have been patiently waiting on our waiting lists. We believe it is an effective and equitable solution that will help us move the needle forward to end homelessness. This concludes my presentation, and we ask that you adopt the attached resolution. Be glad to answer any questions.
Okay, thanks, Sarah. Ms. Peters?
Sarah, let's go back to the public housing turnover units, you can maybe move the slide back there. That one, yes, thank you. Nope, that one, there, hold. I'm still trying to absorb this, I guess I'm not, there's a lot of moving parts on the board here. So first of all, on this slide, when you say 80% and 20%, does it mean that the city of Sacramento has 80% of the public housing units and the county has 20%, or that's what your recommended shuffling of the numbers is?
I'm going to answer that. Yeah, what we are recommending is that of the turnover units, that 80% would be dedicated to the homeless, which would be the city units, and then the remainder would be coming from the regular waiting list, which would be the county. The county public housing turnover units.
And so the split there, maybe this helps, the split there is about 1,700 units, city and about 1,000, a little more than 1,000.
In the county.
In the county. And in any given year, you can have about 200 units, plus or minus, in both jurisdictions turnover for about 400, and so what you're saying of that, of the city, they would utilize...
80% of the 200?
Of their, of the 200, they could turnover them, or 80% of the 400, 80% of the 200?
200, yeah.
Okay, yes, that's where they get to 160.
It's the turnover, not the total number of units that are in the city and the county. I think that's right.
Don just said it, it's, okay. But then I'm reading the staff report, and I am trying to apply that to the slide, and it says that county public housing units are not recommended to serve homeless families because of the rehab of the Twin Rivers public housing community. And the last sentence, last two sentences say, families currently residing in the unit scheduled for rehab will get an H, a housing choice voucher for temporary relocation, so... and then it says some of these families may choose to move to a public housing unit instead of their voucher, and that board movement there is hard for me to follow.
Okay. I'll go ahead and answer that.
I'll go ahead and answer that. The vouchers that they're going to receive are not a part of our voucher allocation at all.
Even though they're called the same? They have the same name?
Right, even though they're called the same, they're not a part of the 12,000 vouchers that we administer.
Okay.
Because we're doing this rehabilitation, HUD gives us special vouchers that allow those families to use them, and they can go out and rent on the private rental market. However, there are some families who may not be able to rent on the private rental market or just choose not to. For instance, especially if you are a large family and you need a four-bedroom unit, it's very difficult for you to rent a four-bedroom unit. However, you may be able to move to a public housing four-bedroom complex or unit. And so they would choose that option. The majority will use the voucher.
Just pause for a second. So does that mean those people that get a voucher and cannot use it and want to move to a public housing unit, are they going to go into this 80% homeless category up here using public housing units?
They will be, they will have first priority over any public housing unit because of the displacement.
I'm just concerned about making them homeless and adding to the whole situation.
No, no, we absolutely cannot make them homeless. They have priority, in all honesty, over everyone because of the displacement.
So, Twin Rivers, how many units are there of public housing?
218.
218. Are all, I know that we discussed this several years ago, but I don't remember the details. Is the, all 218 units, are they being rehabbed?
Yes. They, not rehabbed, they will be demolished and rebuilt.
Demolished and rebuilt. So if you're doing that, are you doing, are you demolishing the entire 218 units at one time? Are you doing it in a phased project?
We are looking at the demolition, at best will be, 2/3 will be demolished and 1/3 left, but possibly we may have to go and demolish the entire site. But it will be a significant portion.
So it's possible you'll have 218 units disappear and, because of being demolished, and how does that impact the other public housing choices?
Right. So all of those individuals will be working with a relocation specialist who will really work with them to determine exactly where they need to relocate, especially given their kids and what we know from the children who live there, they go to many different schools. So the relocation specialist will work with them and help them find a new unit. So they may use that voucher, or they may opt for a unit in public housing that suits their needs. But we absolutely must relocate every single person.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay. I did a follow-on question to your local strategies on the tenant-based rental assistance. I understand the explanation, and I think I understand the concept. How is that coordinated with the report that we're going to hear from Cindy Kavanaugh then? Because again, I didn't see, I see elements, that I guess I could extrapolate just from that description, but I don't really see any tieback to what's being recommended that we're going to hear about in a moment. So where is that? And again, if you're not the right person, Sarah, then Cindy can get prepared to answer that. But I guess, I want to have an understanding, because again, you did make the mention about helping homeless, and we've got this flexible, you know, spending account that would, you know, help with a variety of needs and so forth. We're going to hear about that in a moment. It's in the written staff report. But I guess I'm curious as to whether those fit together and if there is some thought that they do.
Yes, we are working very closely with Cindy Kavanaugh. And actually, in her staff report, the Flexible Support Rehousing Program, she does talk about using the voucher, and that's starting on page 14 and 15. So they are linked together. And so we would be, the intake would take place through the FSRP, the Flexible Rehousing Supports Program.
Okay, yeah, I was turning to that, but I didn't see, I didn't see this acronym as tenant-based rental assistance, I guess. I saw the, using the Limited Homeless Access to Housing Choice vouchers. I saw that recommendation. So is that the same thing? Is that what, so TBRA is that?
The Limited Homeless Allocation would be working with the county's program, the FSRP program.
Right, but I believe Supervisor Chair Natoli, you're talking about the recommendation at the end of the report where we talk about tenant-based rental assistance.
Yes.
And how some people may not qualify for the other federal programs.
Right, right.
And the link with that is really more to the additional funding that we might be able to receive that the mayor talked about. There is an additional, you know, $5 million that the city is looking to set aside, and then starting to leverage that against some of the other funds. So leveraging against the Sutter money in addition to money that might be raised, we wanted to say that there should be some consideration, that you might want to set aside some of those funds for this type of program to catch people who may not qualify.
Okay, all right. Now I understand the context you put it in. Okay, thanks. All right, any other questions? Ms. Kennedy?
I just wanted to, regarding the local strategy, since it's up there, I'll mention it now, and on that slide as well as page 11 where the list is, I take it that's not an exhaustive list, and that's just kind of something we're shooting for as a starting point. Because I'd like to see in the future also added to that list, and I'm sure that there's many other options, but specifically, I'd like to see more emphasis looking at and seeing how perhaps shared housing can play a role in our strategies. As a means of getting enough volume of people together to be able to provide the services in a very, very cost-effective manner.
Absolutely.
Good suggestion. Supervisor Turner?
Thank you. First of all, is this, does this complete the presentation on vouchers before we hear from either of the staff on the, on item 52 or the public?
Yes, it does.
Okay, so I guess my overarching question, and this is directed at LaShelle, is I'd like to understand what constitutes a realistic expectation that any of the various voucher supports, any kind of permutation or mix of the vouchers, will actually be utilized to shelter the subpopulation of homeless individuals, families, that are kind of the most destitute, the folks that are actually camping on the parkway, living outdoors on a regular basis, you know, in our storefronts, under the overpasses? And I'd like an honest answer or assessment of that.
Well, that was one of the main considerations of looking at a 50/50 split. And so looking at the limited allocation is really, you know, with the Flexible Supportive Program that Cindy's going to talk about, really starts to address those people who are currently unsheltered and on the streets. The PBB is more long-term, and still will get to that population, but it will take us some time, obviously. The Move On does allow us to free up spaces where some of those individuals, if they have the appropriate supports, could move into those particular, particular units. And then the homeless youth are definitely, those are people who are unsheltered and are currently, do not have any type of housing assistance.
So which part of that, those two popular, those various populations in LaShelle, do you think would be the folks that might, if it's the well of this board, on the next subject we're going to hear about, to begin to develop the architecture of low-barrier shelter support? Which segments of those voucher recipients would or could come through that point, that particular point of entry, a low-barrier shelter option, and then move into using the vouchers? Would it be the project, project-based vouchers?
They're the best candidates, obviously, for the project-based vouchers, because, you know, all of the services are built in there at the complex, like we see at Seventh and H and at Mather. However, you know, in developing the Flexible Supports Program that Cindy is going to talk about, that is really what we're trying to address. And we're trying to make sure that they have enough wraparound services, even though it is a scattered-site model, that will help assist them.
Any other questions? I had one final one. So just back to your local strategies, and I know that we talked about in Cindy's report, something this board has mentioned, and it comes with a fairly sizable price tag, but the motel multifamily conversions, again, when the agency had that stream of funding, we're able to do those. But we talk about services and, you know, getting vouchers, to the point you made a moment ago about having locations where you can, you know, efficiently, but certainly, I think, effectively provide to, to those who would be provided housing there, you know, the wraparound services, or at least a good, good portion of them, right based at that location, versus scattered out, or again, onesies, twosies, and here and there. I, you know, I think that's something we need to continue to explore. I know the agency may not have the, you know, obviously the wherewithal or the ability, but when county report comes forward, it still seems to me with some of the struggling properties that we have out there that we're probably voucher-ing folks into right now, we'd be far better, better off to serve both the folks that are being served there, but also improve neighborhood aesthetics and climate, if we were to look at some of those properties, and it won't come without a price tag. But to me, that's a very practical approach, and I think what we ought to consider and certainly see the agency as being a partner on that in whatever way would be, you know, feasible or possible, so. Okay. Any other thoughts on that particular topic, though? Again...
Yes, I think, you know, the example that we use in the staff report is Boulevard Court, where we were able to convert those motel rooms into permanent supportive housing, which was, it was an uphill struggle to get there. However, it has done very well over the past several years in terms of operations and continues to serve that community. And if you remember, that particular hotel was a true blight to the community and was a source of all kinds of problems. So it really has transformed that particular area.
Could I ask you a question about that, LaShelle? I tax your memory a little bit. I've been out to Boulevard Court and was impressed at the changes that it made to that area of Sacramento. How many units was it originally, and how many units is it now?
Was 100 motel rooms, and they were converted to 75 permanent supportive houses.
Okay, similar to the Courtyard property we're looking at.
Absolutely.
Is there a, a number of rooms on a motel conversion like that that, where it makes sense or doesn't make sense? Is there a, I mean, a minimum of 50 rooms, a maximum of 100? I don't know. I mean, is there a sweet spot in there that when we're looking at these motels that we should be aiming for?
Absolutely. You know, these are not hard and fast numbers.
I understand that.
But in our experience, what we find is if you're, if you're doing something too small, like 25 units, you just don't get the economies of scale, and it doesn't really work well in terms of the tax credits. So usually somewhere around between 40 to 60 seems to be, and above, seems to work well.
So 40 to 60 being the bottom number?
Exactly.
Okay. I have a list of motels from the county executive now. I'm out cruising bad motels.
Okay.
Yeah, we have some Canada properties, I'm sure, that we could give you a referral list, so.
But some of them are small, and that's what made me think of that.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Yeah, just to the point, though, last thing I'll say on this, but it seems to me, when we get into some of the numbers that we're talking about with families, housing, and the numbers are, you know, at 19 for some of the sheltering and so forth, that if you had a small complex, working with some of the strategies that can be outlined by county staff, those might work for some of the situations that we're talking about here. You know, it may not from a finance standpoint as much, but some of those numbers are fairly small, even though, you know, in the course of a year, you may cycle more folks through some of these programs. And I guess, as I was thinking about these reports and kind of how they merge together and meld together, that I think if we look at some of those distressed properties and, you know, be strategic, strategic about it, but likewise, maybe find a couple that we could start with, and, you know, and integrate some of the programs. We're going to have some funding behind, that's the other thing, we're being asked to, sort of with the vouchers, but with the county report we'll hear in a moment, are being asked to devote some significant funding for a long period of time. And I think that that needs to, that blend needs to be further refined in the work to come, you know, beyond today. And just look at some of these properties, because I think they would, with the right approach, you might get a pretty good neighborhood reception to what we want to do there versus what's there now and what people have been living with for some time.
What I have found is where you get good neighborhood acceptance is, you just have to look at the sheriff's reports on service calls to those motels. And the one that we're working on right now is averaging close to 400 calls a year. And if you think about, one, redirecting the sheriff's services out to protect neighborhoods, but two, the neighbors, you know, they say, "Well, we don't necessarily want more bad neighbors," but you're going to have people on site taking care of them. There's rules about being in at night and not letting undue influences in after a certain time of night and all those kinds of things. So it's, it's trading up for the neighborhood.
Yep.
In many instances.
Good point. Okay, Sarah, thank you very much.
Thank you.
I know a lot of evenings out for you and LaShelle and other members of SHR staff, so we had an afternoon meeting for you here today, so. Okay, with that, unless there's any other questions, we're going to turn to the item 52 report, and then we've got probably 25 or more folks have signed up. I know we expect Mayor Steinberg to join us at some point to offer some comments and maybe others. And we have some folks off agenda. Appreciate your patience. We're going to be fairly long here today, but we have several folks who've signed up to talk to off agenda item relative to a matter of importance to this community as well. Supervisor Frost, you got a question?
I just have a question about, are we, are we going to wait and then discuss the other homeless?
Yes.
Recommendations, and then look back at both of these together?
Because we're going to take comments from folks that may, you know, offer food for, or our consideration, food for thought on item 51 as well, so we're going to hold.
Okay. And then I just wanted to go back to the use it or lose it. On the vouchers, if we don't use them, we lose them. So if we allocate vouchers to homeless, we're basically adding, we have 11 lists, we're adding another list, and it can be number 12, or it could be number 1. Is it number 1, or is it number 12? And is it prioritized, or are you just saying first come, first serve? Because we already know, we already have homeless on some of those other lists. So it's not like we haven't been serving the homeless community up to this point. Is that correct?
That is correct. We have been serving the homeless community through the other programs. However, when we set up the limited allocation, I'll use that as an example, the 150, it's up to 150, and as that program starts ramping up, and you have candidates who are ready for the voucher, then we will be able to assist them. But we won't stop assisting people through our other lists, so that we're not in a situation where we lose any resource.
So you're not setting aside, I mean, if all the vouchers get used up and you're starting to dip into that 150, say, if there's someone ready that can use the voucher that's, you know, not homeless, they might get that voucher? Is that correct?
Yes, we'll continue to work from the list as the programs ramp up, so that at the point, though, when it's in full swing, then yes, 150 will go to them. But we know that it just takes time to do that, and we don't want to lose any resource. Does that, does that answer your question?
Yeah, and then as you're moving along, you'll have a better idea of how that's going to work, and if you're able to even house homeless people with these vouchers.
Right, and that's a part of the report vax, to really give you an update and to document the progress of where we are.
And HUD is involved so that we're not putting ourselves in a position of losing our funding or losing our vouchers?
Exactly. They will be working very closely with us, and will continue to request information in terms of what the dynamics are of our wait lists and how it impacts the different populations. So we'll be working very closely with them.
And I just wanted to go on record to kind of publicly comment on that, because there was some feedback that I did get regarding, there were folks that felt like homeless people were discriminated against because they couldn't get on the list because you had to give an address in order to get on the list. But we do have homeless people on the list, and you don't have to have an address to get on the list. You just have to have a, you can have a third-party address to get on that list. So there is not discrimination against homeless in that, in that situation.
No.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. With that, then, nothing further, then we'll move to the, again, we're going to take comments on both items 51 and 52 from members of the public, once you've heard item 52. So we will then turn to the next item, which is the county report. So I don't know who's going to introduce that. Is Paul?
Mr. Lake is going to.
Mr. Lake, okay.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, members of the board, and thank you for the Girl Scout cookies over at the desk. I appreciate it.
You got s'mores, or you got Thin Mints? We got both. We had the Girl Scouts with us this morning, that's why we're talking about the cookies. We had the Girl Scouts with us this morning, that's why we're talking about the cookies. Okay.
My name is Paul Lake. I'm a deputy county executive for Sacramento County. In the past six months, the board has hosted a number of workshops around homelessness in which we outlined a number of issues, including key strategic issues that we need to approach for reducing homelessness. We talked about successful models that are in place throughout the country for improving emergency, our emergency family sheltering system so that we can reduce the number of families who are living on the street. We talked about housing first principles and how we could redirect our shelters towards more diversion and rapid rehousing. We talked about concepts related to a low-barrier triage center for persons who we are not serving well, and we talked about how we can increase access to permanent housing. Today, we're presenting a comprehensive roadmap for fixing what is not working and shoring up those things that are. We will be discussing several initiatives and bringing to your board's attention options to fund those initiatives. It's important to note that we are not asking for board action today on these initiatives, most of which are contingent on some budget allocations and decisions that need to be made in June. But we are asking for the board's approval to proceed with preparing for the key next steps that we will need to implement this roadmap should those budget allocations be made. Those key steps include preparing a number of requests for proposals related to initiatives for emergency family shelters, transitional housing and employment services, a full-service rehousing shelter, and a flexible supportive rehousing program. Again, we would not release these RFPs until budget allocations are made. We are also, some of the, second key step is preparing and returning to the board with programmatic and siting recommendations for a full-service rehousing shelter. Third, preparing applications for Sutter Getting to Zero Grants, which we would only submit after bringing them back to the board for discussion of policy conditions and subject to budget allocations. And fourth, working with SHRA to bring to the board funding recommendations for some of these initiatives that would use CDBG and emergency shelter grant resources. As we have discussed in past workshops, we need to address two key deficiencies in our current system. We need to improve our crisis response system, and we need to increase pathways to permanent housing. The initiatives we're presenting today will help us achieve those goals. By changing the objectives and focus of our family shelter system and through a more strategic use of transitional housing programs with employment components, we can move families in crisis out of homelessness more quickly and more effectively. Through a full-service rehousing shelter, we can target the homeless who are having the greatest impact on services, neighborhoods, and businesses, providing them, or creating a new path in our crisis response system to provide them with stability to get off the streets and find permanent housing. We will also be presenting today concepts to increase pathways to housing through comprehensive, flexible supporting housing services, and a strategic use of public housing resources. But before I ask our Director of Human Assistance and our Director of Homeless Initiatives to present details of these initiatives, I want to provide some important context. And this slide presents initiatives that we've implemented since, actually before the Great Recession hit, and exemplifies the fact that we, the county, continue to invest in programs for the homeless and have even added to them in the subsequent years. Some of these programs include family, individual, youth, and seasonal shelter programs, transitional housing for individual families and youth, county social workers who use temporary vouchers to help people connect with programs, rapid rehousing programs, and various supporting housing, supportive housing and services for seniors, for families, and for persons with serious mental illness and others. I think this is important context for the public to know that the county continues and has continued to invest in homeless programs. With that, I'd like to turn it over for a discussion of the redesign of our family system to our Director of Human Assistance, Ann Edwards.
Good afternoon, Ann. Wrong way. Good afternoon, Ann Edwards, Department of Human Assistance. The first initiative we're going to talk about today is the redesign of the Family Homeless Response and Sheltering System. This was first raised with you during the fall workshops. As we shared with you in the fall, there are many changes to the CalWorks Housing Homeless Assistance Programs. The permanent homeless assistance and temporary homeless assistance support for CalWorks families is now allowed once per year instead of once in a lifetime. Additionally, the Housing Support Program, providing rapid rehousing for CalWorks families, is now available. All of these programs appear to be reducing the number of literally homeless families seeking shelter. With the emergency shelter contracts expiring in December of 2017, it gives us an opportunity to carefully redesign our shelter services. It also gives us an opportunity to look at the role of St. John's Program for Real Change, which is not really an emergency shelter, it's really a transitional housing program with an emphasis on employment services. So while continuing to work with the current shelter providers, we are proposing one to two emergency shelters who would serve 268 families over the course of the year. Shelters will prioritize unsheltered families, but will also serve at-risk families who cannot be diverted from homelessness. Services will focus on basic shelter services while working immediately to rehouse families. There will also be diversion services available to help families avoid homelessness altogether. We are proposing a bed reservation system to simplify access to shelter and maximize bed utilization. All families, including those not eligible for CalWorks, will be eligible for entry into these shelters. Entry will not be predicated on sobriety, treatment, or service participation. However, families must accept housing services. We are also proposing one family transitional housing program with an employment focus that will serve 19 families over the course of the year. This program will also prioritize unsheltered families, but will also serve at-risk families who cannot be diverted from homelessness. These families will receive basic shelter services in addition to employment services and other supportive services. And again, all families will be eligible, including those who are not currently CalWorks eligible. All of these services in their current form are primarily funded with CalWorks funding. The use of CalWorks funding creates restrictions and limits flexibility within the family system. And unfortunately, our CalWorks allocation for next fiscal year is targeted to be $11.8 million less than this fiscal year. Therefore, we are proposing to reduce the CalWorks, to remove the CalWorks funding from these contracts, replace it with general fund for these programs, allowing for greater flexibility and being more closely aligned with regulations. Ms. Kavanaugh is going to come up and talk about the other three initiatives as well as the funding for all of the initiatives. So that concludes my remarks. I'm happy to answer any questions you have.
I think we'll move through the presentations, and I know we, again, Mayor Steinberg, I want to make sure he gets to make comments, and then we certainly take questions as needed, so stand by.
Okay, thank you.
Okay. Good afternoon, Cindy.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. My name is Cindy Kavanaugh. I'm your Director of Homeless Initiatives. Let's see if I can do two things at once. Are we not, which button? So moving to Initiative 2. This initiative speaks broadly about the strategic use of transitional housing, but specifically about how the county could help to preserve the programs operated at Mather Community Campus. No board action is being requested today, as stated earlier. Mather is site-based transitional housing located on a county-owned parcel of 33 acres, which was conveyed by the federal government for persons experiencing homelessness. In 2015, the Residential and Employment Program, which is one of many programs at Mather, provided housing and services to about 330 individuals in the 183 single units and the 28 family units. It's operated by the Volunteers of America, and the campus, as I said, includes many other programs that are detailed in Attachment 2 of your report. Last fall, based on the general direction of HUD to prioritize permanent housing projects, Sacramento Steps Forward did not forward the Mather Community Campus application in their Continuum of Care application, which is creating, which will create in the fall a $2.5 million annual reduction in support. And this has been part of the support at Mather for many, many years. So since last fall, county and VOA staff have explored how the program can continue to operate as transitional housing with employment services, focusing on persons in recovery from addiction who can benefit from the extended supports as they rebuild their lives and seek employment in an environment supportive of their recovery. It should be noted that because most of the units do not have kitchens, actually, moving to permanent housing is not possible at Mather. We'll talk about funding options a little bit more in a minute, but first a few words on how the county and VOA will work to maximize the Mather Community Campus's contribution to reducing homelessness. County staff supports continuing current practices and proposes an ongoing evaluation and partnership with the VOA and the larger Continuum of Care around the role of Mather and transitional housing and its contributions and its impact on homelessness, specifically for populations that are identified as appropriate in transitional housing, recovery being one, an ongoing look at the target population, the entry criteria and referral methods, and measuring outcomes, not only around the length of stay and exits to permanent housing, but around employment, recovery, and ongoing housing stability as well.
Cindy, if I just add one comment for consideration, I guess, later today or a later date, yeah, my recollection is, is that at the time when Mather was approved and we were going through that process in the mid-1990s, that the authorization was for up to 200 single persons and for up to 60 families. Now, again, the construct of that could, you know, could be different, and obviously capacity for the program to serve is one thing and as well as the physical plant. But I guess I would say, consistent with what you've outlined here, the ability to maybe, not without some added cost, I trust, but, or some, maybe some facility accommodation to actually take those numbers up to those maxims that were under the previous board authorizations and work with the community, I would just offer that as an opportunity when we start talking about accommodating more folks in the system.
Thank you. And we'll talk a little bit more about numbers in a minute.
Okay, thanks.
The third initiative proposes to add shelter and rehousing capacity for persons who typically do not use shelters or engage in services for a variety of reasons and who may have lost hope on being connected to housing. Based on the San Francisco Navigation Center model, the county's full-service rehousing shelter is intended to offer a welcoming place for people who typically have been homeless for a long time and likely have health, behavioral health, or other significant challenges. From the security and safety that the shelter offers on a 24/7 basis, people will work with shelter staff to find their path to permanent housing stability through individualized supports and housing assistance. We anticipate that housing assistance and services will be front and center, but also anticipate colocation or linkages to other essential services, such as income support, obtaining identification, and health and behavioral health services, just to name a few. The shelter will operate through referral agencies and criteria, yet to be completely defined, but there will be no walk-ups to the shelter itself. And of course, we have not worked out all of the operational details, and we anticipate change even while implementing, as we gain experience. We understand, particularly through looking at the San Francisco model, that a commitment to operational flexibility and ongoing evaluation to really have that impact on the population you want to have it on will be very important. In terms of siting, staff is working to identify appropriate county-owned or other sites in the unincorporated area of the county. We anticipate a 75-bed dormitory living with kitchen, showers, bathroom facilities, as well as space for services and community use. Access to transportation or onsite services will be very important. Dependent on the shelter's ability to connect, rehouse clients directly, or to connect clients to their concrete pathways out of homelessness into housing, the shelter should be able to serve 250 to 300 persons a year. And creating this flow, as in the family shelters, is essential to really meet the need within Sacramento and to have that visible impact within our communities.
Okay, we'll stop there for a second. Supervisor Serna, Supervisor Kennedy.
Thank you. So, two things. I just want to point out that, especially for those that have been following this particular part of how we're attempting to fortify the continuum for some time now, that this constitutes a shift in the vernacular a little bit in terms of the, what we're calling this full-service rehousing shelter, previously known as low-barrier triage, which I think this is a better sounding descriptor, I suppose, but it's just going to take some time for us all to understand that this is what we're formally considering in terms of low-barrier triage. And then, secondly, the 250 to 300 persons, Cindy, that you just mentioned that would be served annually, at least for the time being, if we just do the math, that gives us kind of an estimate right now in terms of what we think average length of stay would be. In San Francisco, I believe the maximum was 120 days.
I believe they generally met the 90-day, and I can't recall the maximum, but we looked at between 90 and 120 days. Some people can leave more quickly. It connects with the return to residency program, but yes, something like that.
But I suspect as the fine tuning would occur to all aspects of the continuum, what we might consider in terms of what affects the prospective length of stay in the full-service rehousing shelter would be the ability to take that next step, whatever it might be, transitional housing, other programmatic services or shelter options, once someone has stabilized in the full-service shelter, that too would have an effect on determining what that maximum length of stay would be in this very initial point of entry, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
Agreed.
Okay, Supervisor Kennedy.
Semi-related, so this particular model, the way it's envisioned now, is it tied specifically only to the housing available at that shelter? Meaning that, you know, is there an opportunity for people to be served through the full-service spectrum here and then be referred to other housing, or is it strictly site-based at this location?
I think you're asking about how will folks be rehoused from this shelter location? And I think the answer-
That's what I'm asking.
While we're retaining our flexibility, is a variety of ways. We'll talk in a minute about how we want to align some specific rehousing resources to the shelter, but we also know that folks may be appropriate for transitional housing and may exit that way. Folks may connect with other Continuum of Care resources and go that way. There may also be participants from the flexible supportive rehousing program who stay temporarily in the treat, in the full-service rehousing shelter.
Thank you.
Bill? One other question before you leave the slides. If there was interest on the siting side of this from any one of the six or seven cities in the county to either cite for all 75, or if later on, when we decide we want to, you know, perhaps split this up and make it two different sites with a combined capacity of 75, is there anything that you see as restricting our ability to work with those municipalities or a municipality to cite in their jurisdiction versus the unincorporated county?
There would be no barriers to that.
Okay. Thank you.
Okay.
So for some individuals and families experiencing long-term homelessness, especially those with the complex health and behavioral health challenges, extraordinary engagement and ongoing support is needed from the street engagement and in housing to build trust and to maintain permanent housing stability. So there are three key ingredients for impacting this population that are reflected in this program. We need the ongoing housing assistance. We need flexible, intensive case management, which continues, as I said, through the stay in housing. And we need help, really specialized help, in locating a place to live for a population that we know will be hard to place. This is where creativity, such as shared housing, can come into play. Targeting long-term homeless who interact repeatedly with expensive county systems of care, the county's flexible supportive rehousing program will contract with providers for case management and housing supports. Will partner with SHRA for ongoing rental assistance- Will partner with SHRA for ongoing rental assistance in the limited allocation for 150 persons, but recognizing that people will need more flexible assistance, may not qualify for the Housing Choice voucher, we, we want to serve an additional housing with a flexible housing pool. Should be noted, and I'm going to speak for a little bit about who we are targeting. We have been working with the consultants, preparing a feasibility study for participation in a pay-for-success model. They are doing some very interesting data work, which will be presented either individually or at this board, on who are these long-term stayers that are touching county systems of care, such as sheriff, or behavioral health, or other systems? How long are they homeless? How much are they costing? And we think that is very instructive and we, for this program. We've looked at what other communities have done, such as Los Angeles, in their Housing for Health program, and we, we think it makes sense for this program and these vouchers.
I would just suggest that, that report, you may brief individual board members, that needs to be delivered in these chambers. I think that's a very important piece.
They will be happy to do that.
Yeah, just, whatever juncture that's appropriate, but I just, that's something that we've got to have some understanding about for, for the broad, you know, I think benefit of the community to understand, so.
So I would like to say a few things about why we, we are choosing this approach for targeting, and you will hear probably about coordinated entry. This is required for HUD's, by HUD, for continuum of care programs and emergency solutions grant programs, activities funded through those programs. Currently, a good number of those programs are using coordinated entry, which is under construction by Sacramento Steps Forward, and we know this is a heavy lift, but not all programs are, required programs are currently participating, and this will be a requirement by HUD for 2018. I want to note that the HUD-DASH program is a very similar program to what we're proposing. It uses vouchers with services to a targeted population, in this case, veterans. This program uses referrals by the Veterans Affairs Administration, not through coordinated entry. The full-service, excuse me, the Flexible Supportive Rehousing Program is a new and costly county-funded program, and we think it's appropriate to target persons who use expensive county services repeatedly while not resolving their homelessness for long periods of times using this objective frequent user approach. We are also very aware, and this speaks a bit to Supervisor Frost's earlier comment, that moving these vouchers is not easy, whether it's 150, 250. And we look to the experience in the Shelter Plus Care Program, which is a continuum of care program that received 70 additional vouchers in the fall, not half are yet placed in housing. And so there are many moving parts, the required supports of this program, as well as just the challenges of the market, as, many moving pieces to make this program successful. We haven't talked about referral to the other housing authority resources. We, we're silent, that is, both reports are silent, and I think that would be fruitful conversation for using a coordinated entry system when the time is right.
Can we, question?
Yep, thank you. The, the parenthetical, the 100 persons there, the flexible housing subsidy, go back to my earlier question for LaChelle, in terms of, you know, the overall, overarching question about, you know, which subpopulation of, of, are homeless families and individuals here in Sacramento County, would this be intended to best serve? I'd imagine it would be the hardest to serve, those that are literally sleeping outdoors today.
I would characterize the frequent user approach as the hardest of the hard.
Okay, great, thank you.
Okay, Supervisor Peters.
Thank you. At the top of this slide, there's a, you talked a lot, whatever it takes, high-quality, intensive case management, specialized property services, et cetera. Do we have those kind of people who are properly trained on staff, or are these new people?
So, these will be delivered, excuse me, I'm sorry, these will be delivered by providers within the community. The full-service partnership implemented through the Mental Health Services Act is probably closest to this kind of service delivery. So we certainly have providers who have been doing this with that population, doing a whatever it takes to engagement, going back for engagement, and going back all the way through housing, knowing that, and I think we have some providers here that may, may speak to that. I think it is also true that we need to build capacity with, within this area to broaden the number of providers. I know that the Los Angeles program requires a 10-month training in, I would say, whatever it takes. We might look at doing something like that as well. In terms of housing location, we also have providers who have become more expert in that. We would look to an existing or an external provider who can just focus on those property-related services.
Well, if we've got outside contractors who do this, then is it we, that we haven't dedicated enough money to this program? I mean, if we already have that, why are we in this situation, is kind of where I'm going with this?
I see, good question. We don't pay for it, for a population outside of, I would say, and I may, there may be some exceptions, but in general, we don't pay for it for a population outside of those with serious mental illness. So this is broadening who can be served with, with this kind of service. Thank you.
Good. You have four more slides, Cindy, so you're going to work down through this and we'll get some testimony, so.
Okay. So, I'm moving now to the potential funding for the various initiatives. Detailed funding is contained on page 21 and 22 of your report. Initiative number one will cost a total of just over $2 million. To continue the capacity to serve 33 families nightly and 268 over the year, staff proposes, as Ann had said earlier, to replace the existing CalWorks funding with $1.35 million in new county general fund support. To support the 19 families annually in transitional housing, we propose to use the existing general fund support, and there is a mistake on this page, that is $400,000, not 3334, and the new allocation of $321,000 in new general fund support for transitional housing. So in total, about $1.67 in new general fund support.
Okay.
I'm sorry, what was the general fund support again? I got lost in your 33.
Yeah.
34.
The, the, the current general fund support is 400K, 400,000.
Oh, okay.
That would be $333 million if you leave.
Kind of surprised.
For Mather Community Campus-
I thought I got you started, $333 million.
There's a modest, there's a modest reduction in the program costs, so, and, and we are also proposing to move the family units, or a portion of the family units, to the CalWorks Sober Living Program, which does not have a funding reduction. So they can accommodate, they already operate there, they can accommodate 18 to 19 additional families with that funding. And we would be taking, at least temporarily, approximately nine to 10 family units offline with this funding plan, but we continue, we, we plan to continue to work on it. We would continue with 183 singles within the residential unemployment program, and we have a two-tiered plan for that. The AOA would respond and apply to the request for proposals from the federal SNAP funding in the amount of $836,000, and new county general fund would be needed in the amount of $836,000.
Let me understand very quickly, though, so that you're, you would actually be reducing by 10, from 28 to 18 or 19, and that's all the families we'd be serving out there at the Mather Community Campus, and yet, as I mentioned to you, then the raw number was up to 60 families, again, recognizing families can have multiple members to them. I guess I'm, I'm curious as to how that's going in the right direction if we're trying to add more capacity?
And, I'm sorry, I didn't cover that more. The families are covered, the family units are occupied in, with other programs, not the HUD program. So, so the attachment to outlines all of the Mather activities. There are residential services for 48 Adolfo youth, they are in the, in the family units. In addition, both the CalWorks Sober Living Program and the Options Program serve women and their families who are in addiction treatment. That is funded by the County Department of Health and Human Services.
So, what is the total count at Mather?
Of, of family units?
Yeah, of family units. You're saying the Adolfo Transitional Youth takes 48 of those units?
The youth occupy 48 units, and there are 36 family households currently to be served in the other family units, excuse me, with all of the funding, to be served in 36 family units.
Okay, well, we can come back to that later today. I want to probe that a little more.
It's taken a while to map, it is confusing.
Yeah, yeah, all right, go ahead.
To just maybe finish this potential funding with the, with the last two initiatives. Excuse me. So we anticipate three cost components, and we've identified potential sources for the full-service rehousing shelter. There may be one-time capital improvement costs, and we've preliminarily identified capital funds in existing community development block grant program that could be used for that purpose. Of course, we don't know the number without the site. We estimate annual operating cost of $1.65 million, and we propose in the first year to fund that through general fund, new county general fund, and through an application with Sutter's Getting to Zero campaign. We have not yet applied for that funding. To successfully, the third component is the rehousing part, and to successfully rehouse, we want to have resources available, and so we propose to repurpose the existing county's local rapid rehousing program to align with participants in the shelter.
Okay, Supervisor Serna.
Thank you. Just one thing to think about, if you haven't already, Cindy, with regards to the 50/50 split on operations with Sutter Health, I think it would be wise to do, do some homework on what we think, based on other examples across the state or country, whether it be San Francisco or elsewhere, to find out, try and estimate conservatively, what, what is the number of, that subpopulation of homeless folks that might otherwise be visiting emergency rooms, that if they were able to stabilize in a full-service rehousing environment would have a minimal need for those visits, because I think that's going to be of great interest to them.
Thank you. The last initiative, and I think that would apply there as well, will cost an estimated $3.4 million annually, again, to support 150 persons who come with a voucher and 100 who will need some housing assistance. Staff proposes in the first year a general fund contribution of about $1.6 million to be matched, again, we hope, with a Sutter Getting to Zero application of $1.6 million. In addition, staff proposes to repurpose 205 of, that's currently used for navigators through Sacramento Steps Forward, because this program will have an outreach and engagement component as part of the intensive case management. We will continue to fund two navigators in the P-Bids, in the Property Business Improvement districts of the Florin Road, Mac Road, and the River District. I want to also add that in, in addition to the SSF navigators, the county has a number of ways, and I'm almost done, that the county services regularly engage with persons living on the streets, and so we will build on that infrastructure as well. DHAs, human services, social workers, four county teams providing mobile mental health crisis services, two are currently working, two are in development. The mental health navigators that work with homeless, as well as non-homeless, at the local emergency departments, the jails, loaves and fishes, that's the equivalent of 21 full-time employee persons. And the guest house, which provides outreach functions, as well as navigation and services to persons with mental healthness. So we will, you know, rely on the existing and continue to build on the navigation that already exists within the county services. Did you want me to stop or finish the last two slides?
Go ahead and finish the last slide, just wrap it up quickly, and then we'll take the mayor's comments, and we'll come back to the board for questions and open public testimony.
So this chart just depicts a summary of the first-year annual cost of all four initiatives, a total of $12.9 million, 1.9 from existing general fund, 5.6 in new growth county general fund, and then 5.4 from private, federal, and state resources, some yet to be secured. Finally, we've, have more detail in the report, but we've, this slide captures some key milestones and dates. So Initiative One, the Family Redesign, would continue to refine the parameters with the stakeholders and release a shelter request for proposals and a transitional housing request for proposals in the summer, with contracts in place by late summer. For Mather Community Campus, it would involve the successful application for SNAP funding in the summer and new general fund contracts in place by the time HUD funding expires the end of September. We would continue with siting and scoping the full-service rehousing shelter through the summer, with an RFP for an operator released in October. Depending on the site improvements needed, we anticipate the shelter could open by January 2018. And finally, the Flexible Supportive Rehousing Program could be ready to operate with program, with providers in place by this winter. This goes without saying, I hope, I know Paul stressed it more than I did, that this is contingent on recommendations within the budget in June. Thank you.
Thank you, Cindy. Standby, we have a question, Supervisor Kennedy, and then-
Thank you. Cindy, one, one question I have here is, is looking through the staff report and meetings that you and I have had, talking about how it's all going, you know, the plan's one thing, but how's it going to work? It's, at the front end, for targeting the population that we want to target initially especially, and then at the back end to it for evaluation purposes, which is just as important, because as we've said, we're going to evaluate these programs regularly and make sure that we're actually doing the right thing and spending the money in the right places and putting our resources in the right places. In order to do that, it's pretty heavy lift on, and data-dependent. Are there currently the processes in place that allow you to get the data that you need to both target and to evaluate? I mean, things like, in the past, we've had, you know, difficult getting information out of the emergency rooms and, and the users there at the various health systems, because they don't all talk to each other, and, and it's been difficult, and even if, I don't know how much availability you have now to the HMIS data, but all of that seems like it's critical. Do you have what you need, and if not, how are we going to get there?
So probably not fully in place, but very hopeful paths to good data for both targeting and evaluation. On the targeting, we are relying on the work of, for the feasibility study for the pay-for-success success. They have pulled the data that tells us who is homeless and for how long, who is using sheriff's services, and who is using behavioral health services. We can expand that database with their help. I'm very, very impressed with what they have been able to do, and I will, you know, I think you will be excited to see it as well when they share it. We do not know, but I've asked for a button push that tells us who that target population is. If not, they, they assure me that it will be easy to pull that data on a regular basis for targeting for the Flexible Supportive Rehousing Program. On the back-end side, we hope, we want all programs to participate in the homeless management information system. We would like to work with Sacramento Steps Forward to receive regular reports, which I do not currently receive, but we will need to have regular reports, both on the individual program performance, but more broadly on how it's impacting homelessness. And I'm, and I think that is all, there's very promising work going on with HMIS to hopefully produce that information. We would also like, as the county, to have direct access to HMIS so that we can pull the data ourself.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Cindy. We'll come back probably with more questions, but at this point in time, want to kind of interrupt the flow here and invite Mayor Steinberg to the podium, and appreciate his patience, and certainly welcome him back. When he was last here, we were seated here, chairing the joint meeting, the six-hour session, so appreciate the effort the city's put forward and welcome your comments.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I was just going to start by saying I came back because I know you wanted to reminisce about the joint meeting.
Where do we start?
Where do we start? Well, we start with this. I actually, Mr. Chairman, members of the board, I actually came today, and I thank you for the invitation from NAV and from, from the board, first and foremost, to say thank you, to thank you for putting forward what I consider to be a robust and impressive set of proposals. I think they're actually a paradigm shift in many ways, and I recognize that you all have been grappling with this and working on these sets of issues long before even I got sworn into office. And so I want to say- I want to say thank you. I know that the last several months, in some ways, has not been all that easy. I know that there has been, let's say, some creative tension. I also have learned quite a bit myself in the last three months about the way that the county operates and the history and a lot of the work that you have done and have been doing for not just the last six or eight months, but for many years on these sets of issues. And I come forward to reinforce my hope and my offer to be your partner. Because while I recognize that, under the way our governments are set up, that the responsibility for health and human services primarily, and even under our operating agreement, these housing choice vouchers are under the jurisdiction of the county, I still believe that we are all better off if the county, the city, the SHRA, the other cities, the private stakeholders, are in an operational partnership, especially when it comes to the implementation of these very, very important initiatives. Because two-thirds of the problem, so to speak, according to estimates, do exist within the city. And I know that I want to end the era of who's responsible for what, whose fault is it that this, that the population was moved from here to there? I think as, again, as challenging in some ways as the last couple of months have been, in some ways, they're a breakthrough too because you have a city now that is demonstrating by setting aside $5 million of one-time money and by our aggressive actions that we want to be your partner. And I will say this, and please don't take this as anything, as a lack of humility, but you also have a mayor who wrote Prop 63, who wrote SB 82, the Crisis Alternatives to Emergency Rooms Act, who was the sponsor of the No Place Like Home Initiative, which is going to be our long-term housing solution here because the vouchers is just a temporary, a temporary strategy before we bridge to that. And I think Sacramento County can draw down even more resources than what you're drawing down by virtue of our working together and our partnership. And there are pieces of this, this proposal, SHRA, of course, is the housing expert. City has put forward its resources, I hope, but I've talked to NAV a little bit about this, that we can work collaboratively and as partners in implementing these sets of strategies. And so, I say that, but I go back to where I started, which is to say thank you for your hard work and for putting forward what, not just on paper, but it kind of pops off the page, I think has an opportunity, it gives us an opportunity collectively to change this reality that we all find unacceptable. We're going to take up our piece of this tonight and we'll again applaud the county's action. And I thank you for the time.
Well, thank you, Darryl, and certainly thank you for your leadership and your, I think, outspoken and certainly very energetic approach to, you know, I think, working as a community to try to address this issue. And again, I know that you've got good folks, certainly the city side, a ledger, working on this. And we, you know, again, I think, merging that with the county side of the equation and our other cities and other partners in this, I think we really stand a very good chance of being successful. And what I think everybody wants is the outcome of that is, is to, you know, make a difference in the lives of those that are homeless, but certainly improve the quality of life for all Sacramento counties. Appreciate your work. And again, thank you for being so patient today and for...
It was important for me to listen to as much of the presentation as I could.
Good, thanks. Any other comments?
Thanks, Senator.
Okay. Again, well, thank you, thank you to Mayor Steinberg and to the council for their work. We probably have some other questions, but maybe we have to, in light of, I think, the time, and we have probably close to 30 speakers on this side. We'll just hear from those in the public who've signed to speak. And we'll come back to the board then to talk about recommended actions and any questions the board members have. So, I'm going to take these in the order that they were turned in. And we actually have, I'm going to allot two and a half minutes if that's okay with folks because we've got, we're almost at the four o'clock hour. I know some folks are going to have to leave here around six and hopefully be done before then. But, so with that, let me adjust the timer. And I'll call the first three and then I'll continue to work down to the pile here. We have Cheryl Busby, who was actually here this morning, I believe, and then Beth Southern and Sarah Steinhmer as being our first three speakers. So, please come forward and we welcome your Good afternoon, Cheryl.
Hello, good afternoon, Chair and Board members. My name is Cheryl Busby and I am an intern at Wellspring Women's Center. And a lot of issues are here on the table for us to take a look at and talk about today. And I don't think that the numbers are robust. I think that looking at trying to take care of 3,300 people when we have 70,000 that are homeless is not robust. And I have a few other questions about how do we prevent homelessness? How are we going to create rent stabilization? I myself experienced a $400 a month increase in rent. And so, how do we prevent more homelessness from happening? And then when we looked at SHRA, who definitely is an award-winning organization and works very hard to keep people safe and housed, is there a possibility of forgiveness for the people who were delinquent in paying their rent and their portion of it for moving out of an apartment without having cleaned it very well? And then their judgment comes against them and they owe $500 for cleaning deposit and so they can't re-enter the SHRA program. So, there's some more things that maybe we can look at to address this huge issue. And I thank you for your time today.
Good, thank you, Cheryl. Appreciate your comments. Okay, next is Beth Southern, followed by Sarah, followed by Mike Jaski.
Hello, thank you so much, Chair, as well as Board Supervisors. My name is Beth Southhorn. I'm the Executive Director of Life Steps. It's a resident service, social service provider throughout the state, specifically here in Sacramento County. We serve over 5,000 residence homes, resident homes. And we actually do a lot of prevention for homeless eviction preventions. We actually got developed because we were running a homeless shelter and catching them after eviction was really almost impossible to get them back into housing. So, we designed our model to catch people before they fell. We have worked with both seniors as well as families throughout our time. I've been part of Life Steps for 15 years. I want to just appreciate all of the time and effort that went into this subject. It's a lot of energy and a lot of chaos and a lot of, you know, frankly, a lot of people suffering out there that have a voice and need to have a voice. I really want to just acknowledge SHRA for its proposal, that it takes concerted effort on minimizing homelessness and really targeting the county's design for really targeting the system so that we can get people in housing and less people on the street, but also helping the vulnerable that are still currently on the waiting list. Because I have a lot of seniors, as an example, that make $900 a month. And every single six months, they're up for a possible raise in their affordable housing projects. And so, when you're only making, you know, social security at $1,300, it's even not enough when your rents continue to go up every single month. So, the housing vulnerable are important. I think this plan really encourages both, you know, a balanced approach. I think it's a wise approach. We definitely need more funding outside of what we're looking at in regards to HUD, especially if we do get the target hits on a national basis. And I appreciate and applaud all of the leadership, creativity in doing that. So, thank you so much for your time.
Thank you, Beth. Thank you for your work as well. Okay, next we have Sarah Steinhmer and Mike Jaski, and then David Drake.
Good afternoon. I'm Sarah Steinhmer, an attorney with Legal Services of Northern California. We at Legal Services provide free legal assistance to low-income families and individuals in Sacramento County around housing, health, and public benefits. We help people with evictions, rent increases, et cetera. We assist people who are current participants in the housing choice voucher and public housing programs. We also assist people who are in need of affordable housing, including individuals and families currently experiencing homelessness and people currently on ASHRA's waitlist. I'm here to speak directly to the voucher and public housing proposals that are in front of you. We support SHRA's proposal to have a limited homeless allocation for individuals and families who are homeless. We think that this, coupled with the county's proposal for the flexible supportive rehousing program to provide services, will help to immediately house individuals and families who are currently living on the streets, living in their cars, and bouncing from place to place. We are also, we also support the Move On voucher allocation, which would free up permanent supportive housing units for folks. We are also pleased to see that SHRA is proposing to change its general preference for the voucher lists. The general preference, as you currently know, includes the rent burden preference. The proposal today is to equally weight homelessness and rent burdened for the general housing choice voucher list. This would ensure that in the future, families on the waitlist who are homeless and families that are paying half or more of their extremely small incomes and therefore at risk for becoming homeless at any moment will have access, equal access to the program. And we think this is an important change as well. I'd also like to comment that I, that as SHRA's presentation discussed, SHRA is working closely with HUD to ensure that any proposal that moves forward does comply with fair housing laws. As an agency that works with fair housing, that works and tries to enforce and assist people who are dealing with fair housing issues, we absolutely think that SHRA and the county can make these changes and be in compliance with fair housing laws. What is key is that SHRA do exactly what it is doing, which is consider these issues carefully, work closely with HUD to implement the program and to monitor the program. Thank you. Generally, we ask that you support these programs and move them forward. Thank you.
Okay, thank you, Sarah, for weighing in. Okay. All right, Mike Jaski. Mike, good to see you. I know last time around, you waited, 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 never got a chance to speak, so, on this subject. And then Mike's followed by David Drake, followed by Joan Burke.
Good afternoon, Chair, Natole, and Supervisors. My name is Mike Jaski, representing Sacramento Area Congregation Together and its Homeless Organizing Committee, and I'm a member of St. Mark's Church. First, thanks to the county staff for bringing forward some major initiatives and a significant increase in the resources to devote to this subject. That's very welcome. To be clear, Sacramento Act supports the SRHA homeless priority recommendation as a balanced approach. We believe that the former practices of the waiting lists discriminated against homeless persons, and this is a redress to that longstanding discrimination against homeless persons. And as a general matter, as I've said many times before, you know, it's vital that shelter and support services be expanded to provide enough capacity to care for everyone who's homeless as soon as possible. So, this is, these initiatives are a major step forward. The chart at the bottom of this page shows that the problem is almost entirely single adult. Fussing around the edges with families is important to make sure we get that right because children are at risk. But 20 times larger problem is single adults than is the number of people in families. And the only way that we know of to actually affect this population quickly is the housing choice voucher program, coupled with services that will prevent the sort of landlord problems that might happen if they were just put in housing with no supportive services. Our second major point is that we need to be focused on permanent housing for all homeless persons. And the chart below shows that of the approximately 5,600 total people that are considered homeless but for services in Sacramento County, that about 1,800 of those are either on the street or in emergency shelter. So, that 1,800 is the goal for increasing permanent housing by whatever design, whether individual projects, vouchers, et cetera. And as I said before, the only quick way to begin moving to that scale is the housing choice voucher before you. On page three, I'm going to focus on the Triage Center first and then finish up with our last point. The staff has chosen to drop the triage verb or word from their proposal, but we think triage is actually an important function. It doesn't have to be coupled to a shelter, but triage is how you understand what the needs of an individual person are and how you try to channel them into whatever the proper program for their services are. That is missing entirely from any of the proposals before you today. And we have some ideas about how you might want to approach that. Finally, Sacramento needs to have an overall plan to end homelessness with, you know, all of the action steps, the funding channels, the time sequence to get us from here to there. There are some very meritorious programs that have been put forward by staff, along with things that exist today. We don't really know how they fit together. Will they accomplish the problem or the desired goal? It doesn't appear to us that the proposals that the county are putting forward, you know, do more than make a small dent in the 1,800 people that need to have permanent housing. So, how are we going to deal with maybe 1,000 or more that aren't being addressed by these proposals? And finally, you know, in creating such a plan, it is absolutely critical that all of the parts fit together. We have some concerns about the county staff proposals, creating parallel channels to identify persons and get them into these new programs. We think we need to really push the implementation of a coordinated system of entry, coupled with this triage idea. And that is the way in which people get moved into various programs appropriate to their needs. Thank you, and we appreciate the direction that things are going. Please go faster.
Okay. Thank you, Mike. Okay, very good. Okay, following Mike, then David Drake. And David's followed by Joan Burke, followed by Shakira Parsons.
Good afternoon, Chairman and members of the board. My name is David Drake. I'm a local partner in a business here and we sell construction screws, which are called ground screws. And having seen the article yesterday in The Bee about storage containers, we have got storage containers in McCovey Cove in San Francisco at the ballpark on screws. And I would be very interested to be seeing that our screws could be used instead of concrete, which is very, shall we say, expensive. It's also so permanent. Screws can be used and removed. Some of this housing obviously may even become temporary with screws. You can put screws in the ground. You can take them out. You can put storage containers on top of them, secure the storage containers. I just would like people in the room to know there is an option and a cheaper option than concrete. As I say, we're a local company. There are 1,300 of our screws at the solar, the solar farm at Sutter Landing, which obviously was built with the city and Carnegie and SMUD. It's up and operating. That's been there for about two, three years now. We built that, our company. I'm with Eco Foundation Systems of Sacramento. I just would like to see ground screws used instead of, shall we say, wasting money on possible concrete and stuff like that.
David says we're giving you a little opportunity to certainly put forth your idea. Do you have another one? You want to just put your picture up so people know what we're talking about here? Do you have another one of these? You can put it right there on the white space there and just...
I've got a few more copies of this if anybody wants. And I do want to speak to Cindy Cavanagh after the meeting.
All right, very good. I just wanted people to, if you can just bring it up, just so when you talk about ground screws, this is what we're talking about. These are good size installations.
Thank you for your time and hopefully we can save you some money and time.
Okay, all right, very good. Thank you, David. Creativity from all sorts of interests here. Okay, next, following David, then we have Joan Burke, Joan, and Shakira, and then Bob Ernabush. Good afternoon, Joan.
Good afternoon, Supervisors. Loews and Fishes...
Loews &amp; Fishes strongly supports and thanks you for all four of the initiatives. We feel it's a very substantial approach. You're putting $5 million of new money on the table, and it's also very well thought out, and we are thrilled to see it. We also support SHRA's recommendations. As was said before, there is such a large number of homeless people. We know this is not a complete answer, but as I said, it's a very substantial step, and we thank you for it. I would particularly like to commend your staff for crafting the family shelter redesign in a very thoughtful way that I think truly will get families out of cars and out of tents and into shelters, and that will benefit each family. So, thank you for that as well. One thing that the mayor touched on so eloquently is the partnership between the city and the county and all players. And Sacramento Steps Forward, as you know, since you were instrumental in creating it, has really become a voice of a very engaged community on this issue. So, I would like you to look for ways to coordinate with Sacramento Steps Forward rather than creating separate systems. You know, this sort of community engagement can be very messy, and it may not be the most efficient path, but it is the best path to get a real community input and involvement in addressing homelessness. So, I urge you to consider that as well. But mostly, thank you.
Thank you, Joan, for all your work over the years as well. Okay, next Shakira. And Shakira's followed by Bob Ernabush, followed by Ryan Lefbro. Good afternoon, Shakira.
Hello, hi. I want to say first, thank you for having all of these meetings regarding homelessness, and I really see how much time and attention you guys are trying to give to addressing this crisis. I am the teacher in the K through 2nd grade class at Mustard Seed and the lead teacher there. And I want to say that I support a redesign of the family shelter system and the initiative to create a long-term intensive case management that follows families through the entirety of their crisis. Sometimes that will include many periods of homelessness. And I think we're at a good start right now. I want to update you guys on Mustard Seed a little bit. We still have, we have 26 families, 13 of which are in motels, and that totals 45 kids enrolled. And I want to address for a moment the idea that it is, it is kind of silly, the idea that, you know, we don't want the solution for this crisis to be that we have the homeless population cruise the bad motels in our area, but I feel like it's important to remember that that's literally what we're asking families with children to do right now through our current county motel voucher programs. And of course, it's better to sleep in a motel than camping, but it's not a permanent solution. Of the families the DHA has been working with since last fall, five are still experiencing homelessness. That's 11 children who are going on six, eight months, living in these motels. There's still exposure to drugs, prostitution, a meth lab exploded in one a couple of weeks ago that one of our students was staying at. And we have several families who were housed in the last couple of years, who have returned recently, going on their second, third bout of homelessness now. These four returning families that have recently re-enrolled include 12 kids, and two of them right now are sleeping outside tonight and have been for a couple of months. I bring that up because all of these families who are returning now provide good examples of how an unsupported family who gets into housing can very quickly go back into unhoused situations and return to camping outside. That's it. Thank you so much.
Thanks, Shakira. I would just use this as an opportunity to certainly thank you and for your work in Mustard Seed. I know that, you know, county staff, after our hearing last year, actually, the two hearings, I know certainly worked closely, were working closely with you and your staff and colleagues there. I guess I would just raise the point, as we looked at some of the stuff in the staff report or the information about what it costs to house families for a night, I think in one case it was 109, another was 105. I don't know where we're paying for motel vouchers, but I trust they're in the 60 to $80 a night range, and it would seem to me that, you know, we could look at some examples here and create some more capacity in the system. And, you know, again, supportive services, to your point too, those could add to the cost, but again, if people continue to cycle in and out, then it's, you know, that's not good for those who are waiting to get services. But secondly, it just shows that, you know, certain level of support's needed for some folks, so I guess I would encourage us to take a look at some of the families. But again, thank you for the update, and I'm glad to hear some of them got more permanent situations, others are still, obviously, in very tentative situations.
Yeah, most of them have. It's just, you know, there's like, there's like four or five different types of families that really need a lot.
Well, I think one of the things Shakira just pointed out very quickly, that if this county general fund dollars are a different source than something like the CalWorks, I don't know if that's been a barrier for any of those families, but that'll be one less obstacle where, you know, some of the families couldn't get into the system because they didn't qualify for CalWorks.
Sure.
Okay, very good. Thanks again. Appreciate you being here. Okay, Bob Ernabush, and then Ryan.
Good afternoon, Bob Ernabush, the Executive Director of the Sacramento Regional Coalition to End Homelessness. A quick comment on Agenda Item 51, which we clearly support the direction, encourage SHRA, and we've said it at community meetings as well, to use the Federal Department of Education definition of homelessness rather than HUD's more restrictive definition of homelessness, and I hope that's the direction that the SHRA is moving. As it relates to Item 52, clearly to echo the mayor's words, that there is the potential for a paradigm shift, and clearly we support, as it's presented, and congratulate staff for the hard work that they put together, the four initiatives, but we did have some issues or questions as it relates to a couple of them, and we recognize that this is a hopefully beginning document, and the next iteration has a lot more specificity, specifically as it relates to Program 3 and 4. The full-service rehousing shelter tackling the hardest to serve really doesn't have that much specificity as it relates to behavioral health services. Wording is troubling, such as it could co-locate, there might be some health services that may be available. That kind of wording, I think, needs to be shored up to say, "We're going to provide mental health services, substance abuse services," another, "What's the range of full services?" And as it relates to the flexible supportive housing program, which, again, in concept sounds great, troubling that we've said for the last couple of years, rapid rehousing only works when you have employment and income strategies coupled with it, and even though it says that in broad brush stroke, there's nothing, there's nothing there as it relates to what specifically is the employment and income strategy. Most troubling, and it was alluded to a couple of times, is that moving money away from Sacramento Steps Forward, the $1.2 million specifically in Navigator Program and rapid rehousing, that's going to hurt District 4 and District 3. The unincorporated North County will lose three FTEs, three Navigators. I don't see the operational partnership, and I've read it multiple times, but what does that, what does that mean? That the way that it currently reads is that the county is in part setting up not only a parallel but a separate system, so we will now have three systems that homeless people have to negotiate. Sacramento Steps Forward, the mental health system that predates Sacramento Steps Forward, and then a county system. So, I leave you with one question as we move forward. If you were going to vote on this today, which you're not, thank goodness, would, do you see that what the proposal that we're talking about, is it consumer-friendly? I don't think it's, that it is, and I would like to hear the arguments from, in the debate, of why, if you think so, why it is consumer-friendly? Because it appears that we're setting up yet a third rail, so to speak, a third system that may, may be well-intentioned, but create additional barriers for homeless people to navigate, not only the mental health system, the Sacramento Steps Forward, but then a parallel system through the county. Thank you.
Thanks, Bob. Appreciate your comments, and we'll ponder that question as we hear some more testimony here. Okay, Ryan Lefbro, followed by Justin Giacchino, Giacchino, and then I think it's Gia, Gianvario, Gianvario.
Bob's always hard to follow.
Hi, Ryan.
Good evening, Chairman, members of the board. My name is Ryan Lefbro. I'm CEO for Sacramento Steps Forward. I enjoyed reading through the proposal, because it illustrates a lot of the challenges that we face nationally and certainly in the implementation of a coordinated entry system that's partnered with HUD-funded subsidized housing. We look at the retooling for the family shelter to make sure that we have low barriers to entry and to make sure that we have true wraparound services. I will tell you, for permanent supportive housing, we have about a 12% turnover rate in our overall stock last year. With just the current amount that we had, it gave us just over 190 individuals that we could place, which certainly is not enough given the need in our community. And then we're left with rapid rehousing to utilize, and we are supposed to use, the best practice is to then look at the next individual that would qualify and that highest need population and make a referral. The challenge is really having that intense services with them so that they have the greatest chance for success. So, those are elements that I see coming out of this plan that I really like, and certainly look forward to working alongside Mather Community Campus, continue with our coordinated entry system, and then learning from the process that's been implemented. This ability to reserve space for shelter is interesting. I like the, and I want to get my titles correct, full-service rehousing shelter. To be able to do entry through outreach and targeted populations, I think, is very important to get the most out of that shelter and assuring that you have enough of the housing choice vouchers on the other end for placement so you get good movement through the system. In the spirit of what we all created years ago with Sacramento Steps Forward, I want to continue to encourage the collaboration, not only in the implementation, but also in the planning stages to make sure that we're all working together. And while there are certainly aspects of this plan that are to and unto themselves, county-run and operated, not connected with coordinated entry, that we work towards a goal that someday that is one system, and we're learning from one another. We're doing that very same thing. Bob had mentioned the mental health care system. We're doing that right now, trying to figure out, how are we going to marry these two systems so that for our homeless individual, they have the least challenges to access the care that they need? So, I just want to close in saying I support SHRA's recommendations and, in principle, the recommendations that are made here today, and I look forward to continuing our partnership. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Ryan. Supervisor Kennedy has a question, Ryan?
Yes.
Right.
Ryan, you heard my question earlier about data.
Yes.
Are you going to, will you work with our staff to see if we can work that out?
Absolutely. And currently, we're working with ABT consultants. I personally like Keen County's continuum of care. If you go to their website and look, that's the goal that we're seeking to achieve. I don't know if we'll get that level of detail, but they use the same operating system that we do, and we're in active conversations with them right now. Yeah, thank you very much.
Good, thanks, Ryan. Okay, next, Justin, and then Justin's followed by Gia. Good afternoon, Justin.
Thank you, Chair Natoli and members of the board. Appreciate the opportunity to stand before you again. My name's Justin Giacchino. I'm the Chair of the Community Advocacy Committee of Carmichael's Homeless Assistance Resource Team, also known as Carmichael Heart. I'm also an active member of Neighborhood Hope Dealers and Bayside Outreach to the City's Crisis Center. So, first of all, I want to echo what Chair Natoli said, because it's a very valid point. The issues of homelessness don't affect only the individuals who are experiencing homelessness, but they really affect our entire communities, our local businesses, our residents, and the economic strength of our communities. And so, I definitely appreciate you commenting on that. As an unincorporated community of Carmichael, we fear and struggle with the fact that so much funding and services are provided to the urban core of Sacramento and not reaching our communities. And in the reality of it is that those services aren't really accessible to those facing homelessness or on the verge of facing homelessness in our communities. And so, we would like you guys to please keep that in consideration, the geographical quality when we're issuing those out. The other thing I would encourage you guys to do is possibly look at stuff like the Housing Authority of San Mateo County landlord incentive program. I know that the different apartment complexes that we've reached out to as a committee and spoken with about accepting vouchers and such, they really want to see some more incentives as landlords. And so, in my research, I've seen that the County of San Mateo has quite a successful model of landlord incentives. So, that would be my encouragement. My last encouragement to you guys would be, I get that there's numbers and statistics and dollar signs and percentages. I am not the guy to deal with those numbers, but what I am is, I'm the person who's in the trenches, putting the Goodyear's to the gravel on a daily basis. I learn the names, faces, and stories of the individuals experiencing homelessness in my community, and I advocate to my fullest capabilities. I would ask that you, at some point, take a moment to look past the numbers and realize that these are names, these are faces, these are human beings, these are men, women, and children. I'm working with a family right now who has three young children, and they're steps away from not being able to afford their hotel. My heart bleeds for these people. As I shared in the fall, from being homeless for eight-plus years to now having the opportunity to stand before you as a contributing member of the community and a business owner in my community, I would plead with you to please recognize that these are human lives that we're dealing with, and they can't wait any longer. The talking part's over, we've got to put action to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Justin. Well said. I would just express thanks to Justin and his organization. They recently assisted, not unlike many organizations' room, but a situation I was familiar with and wanted to thank him for coming to the rescue in a very short timeframe. And I would just tell you, that lady got permanent housing, as I understand it, so again, thank you for your assistance in that regard. Okay, next, is it Gia, Gianvario? Yep, there's Gia right there, okay? And then she'll be followed by Davi Rodriguez and then Darryl Rutherford.
Good afternoon. I'm with the South Natomas Community Association, where a new association just popped up over the fact that there's a lot of crime and a lot of homelessness that's kind of come into our area very recently. And all of us have sat down together to look at the problem, and these two propositions that have come forward seem very thoughtful and seem to be very well-fit within whatever structure they need to be fit within. However, I think it's like trying to fit the homeless into the system rather than looking at what the homeless really need, because it leaves out so many people. If we're talking about just helping from 1,700 to 3,300 people, that's just simply not enough, and it certainly won't help the impact that it's had in our community. I would suggest that we need to look at immediate solutions such as camps, setting up cities where people can actually take their tents. We have actually talked, we've gone to the Garden Highway and along the American River and seen trash dumped into the environment. There are two open claims right now with EPA looking into the problems of the hazards in our river. We've looked at the trash, and we've talked to people there. And the homeless community have told us that what they'd like to do is be able to take their tent and go to some place that has a trash bin, that has toilets, that has showers, that possibly has, you know, a kitchen set up where they can actually go. And when they are somewhere, that means we have access to them. That means public resources can be brought to these people. We can find out more about who they are. Towards that end, one of our community members, for example, went to someone who she connected with. She was able to take him, she was trying to get him to Loews &amp; Fishes to be triaged, because that's the other problem. We don't have transportation for our people to actually get to Loews &amp; Fishes to be triaged so they can go to a warming center. She took him in her vehicle while she was transporting him. He had a seizure. She took him to the hospital. He was kind of dumped out of the hospital the next morning. She, still in trying to help him, took him to a warming shelter, and it's my understanding that he is also moving towards getting permanent housing, but he didn't know anything about the resources that were available. He's just this guy sitting in a tent along the river. He doesn't have access to this system that we're talking about, and there's a lot of people that don't. They just don't know that it's out there. So, I think while these propositions are great for the population that they know about and that they are accessing currently and they have lists for, there's a lot of people on those lists that are not getting access, and we need to do, we need to have a solution for them currently, right now. And that's what will help communities, that's what will help the homeless, and it'll also help us as a society getting to these people and helping them. And that's what, that's what our community association is all about. We're trying to help with that, and we're connecting with as many organizations as possible to help that happen, so, thank you.
Good. Thank you, Gia, for your comments. Good. Thank you, Gia, for your comments.
I actually had a response to that. I want to respond to that speaker, since that community's in the district I represent. I appreciate you being here and certainly appreciate your testimony. I'd encourage you to understand a little bit better in the host of what we're, you know, the spectrum of fortification of our continuum of services that we're considering today, the fact that there are 100 vouchers that would actually be used, 100 spaces, if you will, for those folks that would not fit neatly, to use your words, into the system, whether they be housing choice vouchers for participating apartments or for our own public housing. And that's why I asked the questions earlier, and I'm sure if you were in the audience at the time or not. But that's, excuse me, but that's why I asked the questions that I did, is because my concern, because I've heard loud and clear from my constituents, especially since the water has come up in recent weeks and months, about, you know, the fact that what once was kind of hidden in the parkway was now very prominent in a number of communities, not just South Natomas. I'm very interested in when we are forced to ask people to move from the parkway because of either fires in the summer or high water in the winter, that they have a place to immediately go. So the 100 units that I asked about earlier, that helps satisfy it. Number two, this idea of low-barrier triage or full, if you want to call it full-service sheltering, is by design intended to help that particular subpopulation. Again, that's why I've had the questions that I've had this for this afternoon about making sure that, I mean, I understand it pretty well because I've been bird-dogging this for about a year now, to tell you the truth, but I want the public, I want my constituents in particular that live near the parkway to understand that the purpose for that, the inspiration for that, is because quite frankly, we don't have a place for those folks to go right now. They get put on waiting lists, they get offered a motel voucher. Oftentimes, only a fraction of them will actually accept the help because of various barriers, whether it's no pets or no partners or where my possession's going to be stashed. So believe me, as your county supervisor, that has been what has really, you know, sparked my interest over the last more than a year in this whole concept of low-barrier triage as one component part to fortify our continuum. That's why Chair Natoli and I went to San Francisco last Friday to see what's working in San Francisco. I totally agree with you that it's not enough capacity by any means, given what we know about the total population. That could be said for every single aspect of service delivery that this county offers. There's just not enough. We get that. But we have limited resources, just like your households have limited budgets, and there's a lot of other things you'd like to be able to do, take vacations, all those types of things. So believe me, I want to make sure you don't think that there are deaf ears up here. I have heard you very loud and clear, and it's not, hasn't just been recently that we've been trying to deal with the various concerns that you've expressed in your testimony, and I think it's important that you understand that.
Okay. Thank you. And I will educate myself more about everything that you do.
And I want to be of assistance to you. If you want a meeting, a follow-up meeting, I'd be happy to make myself available.
Thank you.
Okay, good. Thanks, Phil. Thanks, Gia. Okay, next, Davi Rodriguez. Davi? He was here earlier, so I'll hold that. Okay, then Darryl Rutherford. And Darryl will be followed by Tricia Rosenbaum and Patty Uplinger.
Good afternoon, Chair Natoli, Board of Supervisors, Darryl Rutherford, Executive Director of Sacramento Housing Alliance, and it's been a pleasure and really thank you and your staff over the last several days to take time out to meet with the Housing Alliance, our members and partners, on this real important issue. We greatly appreciate all the work that staff, both SHRA and county staff, have put into these initiatives. And we believe that what you have before you is a pretty comprehensive set of strategies that will certainly help to bring an end to this homelessness crisis. It's a step in the right direction and presents a monumental commitment to bring an end to what we've all been seeing on the streets here and the horror stories that we've been hearing. We really appreciate everything that has been going on. We support SHRA's recommendation that 100 turnover vouchers a year be tied to housing developments that include units for people and families experiencing homelessness. However, we hope that there's some flexibility built into this program as well to respond to other opportunities that may pop up, whether it be new innovative projects that come forward that could benefit from these vouchers, or No Place Like Home timelines, or with the rental market changing as it has and other federal policies that may come down. We also applaud staff in proposing the four initiatives within the report. However, we're concerned with, as many have said earlier, with redirecting some of the services from Sacramento Steps Forward without fully analyzing the impacts that will have on the system that has been put in place by the county back in 2009. We believe that county staff should be collaborating with Sacramento Steps Forward to improve and utilize the coordinated entry program and to use it as the staff develops the full-service rehousing shelter and flexible supportive rehousing programs versus creating a whole new and potentially duplicative entry system. We also think that this would be a good time to declare a state of homelessness emergency as well as shelter emergency, which could help with siding and movement of these newly-created shelters. But lastly, we really want to address the funding issue. Keep going, having to go back to the general fund over and over, I think, is pretty challenging for all of you to have to do. We believe that there is one source already in place that's at your disposal, and that would be the Boomerang Funds, former redevelopment dollars. You know, last year it was at $3 million. I'm imagining it's increasing somewhat this year, but if you created an ordinance to put that in place to assist with the homelessness issue as well as affordable housing, you wouldn't have to go back year after year to find those at $3 to $5 million, which will increase over time. So with that, really thank you guys for your time. Apologize for lateness on our letter, but I hope you are able to review it, and feel free to contact us with any other questions, comments. Have a good day.
Thank you, Darryl. Thanks for the Housing Alliance's engagement, and certainly for your being here today and the comments on the report, as well as suggestions for things we might do differently. Okay, next, we have Tricia, and then followed by Patty, and then followed by Roland Reeves.
Good afternoon. Thank you. I'm Tricia Rosenbaum with Next Move. We have served the community for over 40 years as the first and, for many years, the only family shelter, serving families, keeping them intact with male youth over the age of 14, allowing them to house together in shelter. We look forward to continuing this service in the new model and the redesign. Want to recognize all the hard work the county staff and you and as the board are doing to most effectively align the limited resources, excuse me, we have. We encourage continued work to fund prevention and diversion that will keep families more stably housed and keep them from becoming homeless to begin with. I would love to see one day that you put us out of business. We don't need a family shelter if we no longer have homeless families. We also encourage the use of motel voucher funding only as a means of covering short-term gaps. We heard stories about some of these situations being long-term, and that is certainly not ideal. Many families need more time than one week or 16 days, and the availability of shelter and transitional housing will help them go there. In addition to proposed actions today, we strongly encourage a focused and aggressive plan to develop affordable housing. This is now and will continue to be a major bottleneck in our community. Per the proposal, to serve the number of families in this redesigned family structure, family shelter structure, we need to move families in 45 days. It's virtually impossible, and we will be set up to fail if we don't have places to move the families to. So we are certainly working to that. Next Move has a history of moving families quickly through the system and successfully, but the last couple of years, the housing crunch has made that doubtful. So we encourage the affordable housing focus. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Tricia, and for your organization's good work over the years. Okay, next, Patty Uplinger, and then Roland Reeves, followed by Rick Betis.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisors. Patty Uplinger, I am the Chair of the Sacramento County Developmental Disabilities Planning and Advisory Council, as well as the Director of Housing Now, and we provide, we assist people with developmental disabilities to locate housing in the Sacramento County area. Many of these people are on SSI, which is around $900 a month. That doesn't go very far. As we've heard, there's not very many housing opportunities. We need to create more opportunities. It seems like there's some creative funding sources that we can tap into. We can't necessarily just rely on the exciting No Place Like Home that's focused on mental illness. The population I'm talking about are people with intellectual and developmental disabilities. I have a young lady right now currently that has a Section 8 voucher. She's been, and she's in a wheelchair. There's a lack of accessible housing in the county, and I know there's no immediate solutions to this. It's something to keep in mind. She's been looking for over six months to find a landlord, a place that is wheelchair-accessible that will accept the housing choice voucher program. Currently, she does have a roof over her head, so that's the good news. And I am pleased to hear, I did owe Sarah's comments from Legal Services about my initial concern was that homeless folks would be a priority and that people at risk of homelessness, which is many of these folks I'm referring to, would be placed at the bottom of priority. So I'm glad to hear that there's some equal access to the resources, the limited resources that SHRA does have. And I concur with Supervisor Peters. I'm YMB from within a mile of the Boulevard Court, YMB is in my backyard, and that has been successful project, and I think we could use more of those, and I think that's worthwhile to look into. And also, with the project-based set-asides, I want to make sure that there is access to those projects. If we do have, I think that's great, and we totally agree with all the hard work that SHRA has done. I want to make sure that people with developmental disabilities are included in this equation as well. Thank you.
Thank you, Patty. And thanks for being so patient at the last hearing. I know you didn't get a chance to talk, but you're back here this time, so great. Thanks. Okay, next, Roland Reeves, and Roland's followed by Rick Betis, followed by Kathy Cresswell.
Good afternoon, Board. My name's Roland Reeves. I'm from South Natomas. I've been a resident there for 30 years. I'm a member of the Natomas Neighborhood Association, and some of our members are here. You've just heard one of them speak. My purpose is just to give you a very detailed description of what our Neighborhood Network has been doing the last two months and to give you some of the conclusions and recommendations we've come up with. First of all, we had two very large meetings. Over 50 people attended each one. Our city council member, Mr. Harris, was there, and also his staff member on the second meeting. And in those meetings, we came up with a coordinated effort to deal with the homeless situation in our neighborhood. We'd actually become, we're becoming very overwhelmed. And Mr. Cern, I've got to tell you, thank you very much for your comments yesterday at the Chamber of Commerce luncheon. Homelessness is a tough issue, and you didn't dodge it, and the people in our network appreciate your comments and you bringing that up, you know, so, well done. Thank you very much. Basically, our coordinated efforts, we removed large numbers of homeless people and their trash from our neighborhood, and that's an ongoing process, but it ripped our hearts out to do it. I'm telling you, you know, we went from, these people needed to be booted out of here to, oh my gosh, this is just, what are we going to do for these people? I mean, it's very, very tough. I know right across the street from me, I have the Banning Creek Parkway, and there were some people there, and it was just, you know, but they'd created huge, enormous amounts of trash. It's just, we've had many missions of mercy, and these two ladies right here are angels. I'm telling you, they've been down there many times. They're up talking to these people, telling them about the city and the county services being offered. I'm hanging back, watching Jessica's back, and she is just up there with everybody, and with other people, too. It's just, you know, it's just amazing. Wonderful people, and I applaud you guys. Really nice. And this is multiple, multiple visits up to the American, you know, the parkway. Our conclusions: Large percentages of homeless people are not interested in city or county services as they're now being offered. We repeatedly told them, you can do this, you can do that, you can do that. Well, they, you know, no response. Homelessness is a symptom. The real issue is the drug addiction and the, you know, and the alcoholism and the mental health issues that are causing this symptom, and we've got to deal with that. We've got to really recognize that, you know, giving somebody a place to stay might not be, you know, where they're completely independent, might not be the right way to go with a large percentage of people, although it's going to help some people that want it, you know. Just our conclusion again, we suggest that small homeless shelters, 20 to 50 people be set up with no barrier to entry. These people are living in horrendous conditions right now. Anything we could provide for them, even with no barrier to entry, has got to be an improvement. I mean, that's just, and also, they're in one area, and, you know, you multiple, you just keep sweeping the county, and you deposit these people at these shelters until they just get tired of moving. One of the things that they said they don't like to do is they got to keep moving all the time because the police are coming along and booting them out, you know? Well, if they know they're being booted to someplace that has, you know, some social services, that has a laundry, it has showers, toilets, these types of things. And then finally, and I'll be done, the American River Parkway can't be used, we can't continue to use it as our unofficial homeless shelter, homeless area. It's being destroyed. We've taken multiple pictures down there. The garbage is horrendous beyond imagination. And even grosser than that, and I've got to mention that this here, is the human waste and animal waste. We couldn't walk around up there without, we just literally had to keep dodging. I mean, it's just, the amount of waste is just beyond imagination. And of course, that's right at the confluence of the American Sacramento Rivers, and what's a quarter of a mile down from that confluence? The main intake waterway for the city of Sacramento. So tough situation, I know. I know our resources are limited. That's just the conclusion we've come up with. If we can do anything with it, that's, we'd be more than happy, you know?
Well, thank you, Roland. Thanks, Jessica, and Gia, too, and I know Supervisor Cern had some comments.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank all three of you for being here, and again, appreciate the sharing of what you've witnessed. It's something that I'm extremely familiar with. As your county representative, I would encourage you to please stay engaged. Don't let this be the last board hearing that you attend on the subject. I invite you now, here and now, to please join us in June when we have our budget discussions, not just on social services and human assistance services, but also on our park services. That would be very helpful for this board to continue to hear what you see. We had a board meeting here, I don't know, about a month ago, three weeks ago, where I had a constituent that showed this board some photographs of what they were seeing on the parkway, and I dare say that that had a fairly significant impact on the disposition of this board, and that happens from time to time. But I got to tell you, I think this is one of the first times I've heard such a, kind of a thoughtful account from South Natomas in these chambers about this particular subject. I know it's been a subject of concern for some time, and it may have been an issue that you've dealt more closely with and more frequently with because it is in the incorporated city limits with your council member, but the welcome mat is out. I'd love to have my constituents from South Natomas here to, again, contribute to the conversation in the future.
Well, we thank you very much, and, you know, we're, any steps that people are making is a step in the right direction from where we've been, and if we could, if our conclusions could be adopted, we'd really love that.
They got to be here.
Good, good. Thank you, Roland. Good. Okay, Mr. Betis, Rick, followed by Kathy Cresswell.
Thank you, Chair Natoli, and Board members, Rick Betis. And this time, I'm talking on behalf of the League of Women Voters of Sacramento, who's identified this as a top priority cause for them. Of course, they don't provide services, but they do provide advocacy at all three levels, state and federal, so they're willing to do what they can to help out. And also, strangely, the Sierra Club, you might not believe that, but the national president is now a long-term social activist, social equity advocate, who is a healthcare professional in the state, for the state of New York, actually, epidemiologist-type work. So they are also supportive of this, and of course, they're supportive from the environmental point of view, and because we know that affordable housing and homeless corrections also result in transit-oriented designs and improve air quality and help us out. designs and improve air quality and, and help us out with the climate change problem. We think that the report that's been done by both SHRA and the county staff is excellent, quite professional, of course, and a lot of, a lot of great ideas in there that we support. We do think, agree with others who have commented, that you should emphasize the coordination and not create parallel or duplicate services. And I think that's important. I think you should not only work with the city of Sacramento, but with the Sacramento Steps Forward and the other, other cities within the county. I think that's really quite important. With respect to the cost, I think you should look at trying to get people off the streets as quickly as you can with making use of existing, existing vacant buildings as much as you can. I know recently, I read, well, I go to SacState every Friday, and I read where they're, they're having homeless students stay in the dorms with the, with the, you know, rate-paying students. And I think that's a great idea, to have shared uses. And I might mention with respect to funding, that's, that's going to be a real challenge. There's a lot of good ideas here, but funding is going to be a real challenge. And I note that Los Angeles, in the past two elections, has passed a bond issue for affordable housing, as well as a, a sales tax increment for, for services for the homeless. So I think that's something you might have to look at, considering the federal situation. And lastly, I might want to say that, well, the, the mental health situation is very important and has to be solved, but in a lot of cases, you have people, the people that I've worked with on this family promise effort, they are really great people, are trying to pull themselves out. But the last thing they can do, the last thing they can accomplish after finding work and everything is to find a housing that they can afford. So I think that's, the housing-first idea still, still should be considered. Thank you.
Thank you, Rick. Appreciate your comments. Okay. Kathy Crestwell, followed by John Foley, followed by Janet Fricki.
Good afternoon, Chair and members of the board. On behalf of the Housing and Redevelopment Commission, I am here today because I'm pleased to tell you that the commission unanimously voted to support the SHRA proposal. The SHRA proposal demonstrates the leadership in trying to, to meaningfully address homeless problems and mindful of the other vulnerable populations that are in need. The staff report recognizes that the housing authority has multiple obligations and goals. And in crafting the strategy, they've really made progress in achieving and in reaching all of those goals and really trying to maximize the effectiveness of a very precious and limited resource, including working with the county on the flexible supportive rehousing. The plan that they came up with recognizes the urgency to act. It recognizes that HUD is actually encouraging people to do these prioritization for homeless and, and provides guidance on how to do that. And I think SHRA has effectively looked at ensuring that while they're serving the homeless population, they aren't disadvantaging other populations. I think the plan that they've got really does that, and they should be commended for that. I think it also recognizes the need to support immediate action, as well as additional housing resources that are needed, particularly related to the project-based vouchers. In fact, I think there's room to increase that opportunity. And while it's a good effort, it clearly, and the report recognizes, it's not enough that we have to find other resources, and I commend them for doing that. So I urge your support in that plan. And then just quickly, I want to talk about the county's proposal. I really commend staff in the county for pulling this together. It's really a clear reflection of your leadership and the values of the board, and I commend you and the staff in coming up with a strategy that, while it is not perfect, it is clearly, in my perspective, the most comprehensive and significant effort that's ever been undertaken in this effort to end homelessness. And you're to be commended for doing that. It recognizes the urgency to act, that we cannot tolerate one more person dying while being homeless. And, and it's well thought out, working both to strengthen existing resources, as well as identifying new resources. I will just quickly say, very much support it, but I would encourage you to strengthen the coordination in implementing, including working with SSF, and also on the coordinated entry. Please don't set up a new system. The coordinated entry system that we do have can include things like multiple users. So we should be developing and expanding that. And also, I want to commend you for considering, looking at really expanding your general fund resources. Again, our budgets are a reflection of our values, and, and your willingness to consider really expanding that resource to address homelessness is, is really important. So I look forward to continuing to work with you, as well as, and this all part in the county was not related to SHRA's position. I meant to mention, it's, I took it, I changed my hat. But also, to encourage you to work on the county proposal, which talked about doing a bond as well, because that would be very helpful. So thank you.
Great. Thank you, Kathy. Thanks for wearing two hats today. But also, I want to just convey to the Sacramento Housing Redevelopment Agency Commission, they're, thank them for their work and for your leadership as the chair of that board this year. So thank you again for being here. Okay. I have next John Foley, and then Janet Fricki. And then Janet will be followed by Holly Wonders Stiles. Hi, John.
Good afternoon, Mr. Chair, members of the board. My name is John Foley. I'm Executive Director of Sacramento Self-Help Housing. As you could hear from the folks from South Natomas and have heard from folks from Carmichael Hart and other community groups, people have taken matters into their own hands, trying to figure out how to deal with the fact that their neighbors and their neighborhoods are full of people experiencing homelessness. It's very impressive to me that your staff and your leadership have decided to take real responsibility and put yourself out there as taking the lead on trying to find some ways to respond to this homelessness crisis. I, I think that Sacramento Steps Forward, City of Sacramento, and the other communities are also doing good work. But just the nature of the way we organize our, our polity, it's really in your ballpark. It's really your responsibility. And I hope that you'll find ways to encourage the other communities and the, and the neighborhoods to see you as, as the leaders in this. I, I know that you recognize that, as much as you might have, whether it's a triage center or something else, if you don't have housing into which to guide people, it's, you know, sort of an unfair and almost cruel joke. That's certainly the experience that we've had in trying to work with Sacramento Steps Forward on navigation, that we're sort of navigating people to nowhere. There's, this housing crisis is, is, continues to surprise people who come to us for help, that we really don't have an easy way to provide housing for them, even though they have money and have, you know, a good record. They still can't find a place to live. The time it takes us to help people who have vouchers to get into housing is unbelievable and very frustrating. I, and whether, you know, that leads you to find ways to, you know, find additional resources to help SHRA and affordable housing developers build housing, that's great. Whether you can help us to create more rooming houses and shared housing, to use the existing stock to expand housing capacity. Housing is, is really the name of the game. Your staff, Cindy, Paul, and others have put together, I think, the beginning of a pretty good, new way to, to look at this. But unless you can provide them with an amazing number of new housing units, it's not going to be that pretty, and you're going to continue to have neighbors frustrated and your, your staff frustrated when you get those calls. So I hope you focus on developing housing. Thank you.
Thank you, John. Thank you for your efforts over the years as well. Okay, Janet. And then Janet's followed by Holly Wonders Stiles, followed by Susie Dotson. Good afternoon, Janet.
Hi. Good afternoon. Thank you for allowing all of us to have you hear our voices. So I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Lots of good suggestions. When I wanted to, with shelters and homeless, there, and partnering, there are over a dozen schools that are closed in Sacramento County for immediate homeless shelters. They have heat and air bathrooms. The junior high and high schools have showers. Each has the cafeteria, kitchen. And it can also be set up with, speaking of partnering, with other entities that have grants for, for education. And what better place than already a school that's set up? The different classrooms, you can work with people, short-term, certainly in the shelters to just get them up and out, but also, they could be used for longer term with housing and having education for them. With the kitchen area, getting trained and having a certificate that they're a cook. All the schools have grass. It could so easily be turned into edible gardening, where there'll be, the residents would be able to not just help participate in eating the food, but people get certificates as being a master gardener. All trees that are planted could be fruit, fruit-bearing. But we have resources, if we just partner, that can cost a lot less than, like, tearing down a standing building and then rebuilding. That's about the most expensive thing you can do. The least expenses using the resources that we have and partnering, getting education, getting the schools, things that are already up. And another thing with this wonderful woman, about really emergency and even having like a tent city, and I'm just going to piggyback real quick. All of the schools also have offices where it'd be easy to have triage come in for, for the schools. But Mr. Warren, Sacramento City Council member, is bringing up this evening, is my time up?
Yes, it is.
Okay. Having, he, he has a plan with some ground in a location in Del Paso Heights where he wants to have an emergency, like, outdoor tent city shelter. So I hope you guys support that.
Okay. Thank you, Janet. Appreciate your comments, and thank you for the good suggestions. Okay. Holly, followed by Susie Dotson, followed by Gerald and Anna Franklin.
Good afternoon, Chair and Supervisor. My name is Holly Wonders Stiles, and I'm the Director of Housing Development from Mutual Housing California. Since 2011, we have operated mutual housing at the Highlands, a permanent supportive housing community, where we have had the pleasure of watching formerly homeless people shed that label of homelessness. We strongly support all the proposals presented today for addressing the homeless crisis. And given the clear benefits of permanent supportive housing, where onsite services are not just offered, but readily available at the same place where people live, we are particularly pleased today to see the inclusion of project-based vouchers in the proposals. Project-based vouchers are a critical piece of the puzzle when securing the operating and capital funding that can be used to create housing that is financially feasible over the long term. We look forward to the opportunity to have further conversations with SHRA as it develops the specific strategies for utilizing the vouchers. And in light of that, making sure that Sacramento is successful in accessing the No Place Like Home program and the resources that will be available through the state. And we also look forward to further conversations regarding the creation of new revenues for affordable housing, so that we are sure to be able to build the housing for which project-based vouchers are, are one piece of the puzzle, and capital sources will be another important part of the puzzle. Thank you.
Great. Holly, thanks for your organization, for the good work as well. Okay, Susie Dotson, then the Franklins, and then Eric Dismuks. Hi, good afternoon.
Hi. Good afternoon, Chair and Board of Supervisors. Susie Dotson, Executive Director of Wind Youth Services and Co-Chair of the Sacramento Homeless Youth Task Force. I commend the county for the work and the efforts towards reducing homelessness, and I'm really excited about the P3 performance pilot that we, that we're a part of and the 100 SHRA housing vouchers that go along with it. However, I'd be remiss not to talk a little bit about the county proposal and its lack of, of ability to address the homeless youth population. Without strategies to address this population, homeless youth will become our next generation of chronically homeless. Sacramento currently has over 500 youth between 18 and 24 on a community queue, and they make up at least 15% of the overall homeless population. This is an overwhelming number because our youth shelters and youth housing programs are full to capacity. Wind's drop-in center saw nearly 1,000 unduplicated youth last year. We were only able to house 70 out of those, out of those youth. And, and that was not due to lack of trying, it was just due to lack of resources. Youth experience high levels of victimization while homeless, including sexual exploitation and labor trafficking. Homeless youth experience rape and assault rates three times higher than the general population. Homeless youth are three times more likely to be parenting as housed youth. Youth have unique developmental needs that will be ignored if we don't have intentional programming to address them. We cannot apply adult situations, solutions to homeless youth. We are losing track of youth as they get lost into adult systems or choose to remain in unsafe environments, rather than cope with the unknowns of adult shelters. Youth homelessness does not look like adult homelessness. By only focusing on the chronically homeless, we miss key opportunities to intervene and stabilize youth. Our dependence on HUD funds for home, for, for most of our homeless programs is limiting our interventions for youth. We need to move upstream to prevent homelessness. We need to fund more transitional programs specifically focused on youth. We need to innovate programs that don't force youth into reliance on HUD funding, but instead help prevent youth from becoming homeless or intervene quickly to move them out of homelessness. We need to start investing in youth, or we will never end the cycle of homelessness. When considering where to invest on solutions to end homelessness, please consider youth. The Sacramento Homeless Youth Task Force is filled with adults and youth who believe that Sacramento can end youth homelessness. Please partner with us to make ending youth homelessness a reality. Thank you.
Great. Thank you, Susie. Thank you for your work and out of your organization. Okay. We have Gerald and Anna Franklin, and followed by Eric Dismuks, followed by Heidi Stauffer.
Good afternoon, Board. Good afternoon, folks. I'm going to speak briefly about the homeless situation. We're homeless, we're currently homeless, me and my family, and we're in the Next Move program. Okay. We want to go ahead and de-address the people to let you guys know that the program does help, if you utilize it right, okay? There are different programs for us and our children to better success and move forward in our situation. I agree, there's too many vacant buildings. There's too many families that are homeless, and too much that you guys can do more, I believe. And we ask that you do. There shouldn't be any reason why there's a family out there today. That's my son, actually. He wants his two cents in, I guess. But yes, we appreciate what you guys are doing, and we ask that you just do a little more for those who haven't been helped yet, like me and my family. Thank you for your consideration. Thank you for your time.
Good. Well, thank you, Gerald. Good luck to you and to your family. Okay. Eric. And Eric, we follow by Heidi. Hi, Eric.
Good afternoon, everyone. I'd like to let you know that I am a member of the homeless community myself, and I am also with Next Move. And I would like to say that they do their best in helping a person help himself by, you know, giving him all the resources that he need to talk to someone, a peace of mind. My counselors and my caseworkers have been very well in keeping me informed on the different situations, on what's going on out there, and what I need to tap into to make my situation better for myself and my daughter. And they just, you know, they help us out a lot, you know? I mean, the people that really want to be helped and get on with their lives and everything, they tap into those people. And, you know, if you're doing what you're supposed to do, you should be successful in, you know, maintaining that, getting out of the homeless situation into a, a safe home for you, yourself and your family. That's pretty much all I need to say today, and thank you, everyone. You guys have a wonderful day.
Thank you both to Eric, and certainly to the Franklins for being here, and we wish you well, certainly. And again, just appreciate your voices here today. So, all right. Next, Heidi, and then followed by Jeffrey Tardigui will be our last speaker on this item today that I have signed up anyway. Okay.
Good evening. Heidi Stauffer, Director of Finance for St. John's Program for Real Change. And St. John's, here in Sacramento, provides crisis intervention, mental health services, alcohol and other drugs. alcohol and other drug services, shelter and transitional housing, family reunification services, employment services, and many other services to the women and children that we serve. Homeless women and children in Sacramento County are of the most vulnerable population. St. John's is a current recipient of CalWorks funding for its shelter program. And like others have said, we, you know, our program is geared toward transitional housing and other services, shelter as well. And in light of the imminent threat of the loss of the CalWorks funding, we want to recognize the county and the staff's hard work in developing a plan that acknowledges that there are multiple pathways to families lifting themselves up and out of homelessness, including rapid rehousing, but as well as comprehensive supportive services like those offered by St. John's. So, we just, we look forward to the continued partnership, potentially through the allocation of general fund dollars to help us continue to provide these services in Sacramento County. So, thank you to the Board and to the staff.
Great. Thank you, Heidi. Thank you to your program and to your work in helping families and children. Okay, I had Davi Rodriguez. Did Davi return? He'd signed up on this. And then Jeffrey Tardaglia spoke earlier. I saw he was back in the chambers, is Jeff Lee? Okay. Anyone else that didn't, I didn't call upon that signed up to speak on item 51 and 52? All right. Thank you all very much. We'll bring it then back to the Board for questions or any other comments. And we'll have Nav for you to sum up in a moment, but I want to, we kind of cut the questions short, so let me ask any Board members any questions about the staff report? I'd just like to, a couple then, not so much questions, I think, but comments that may reflect some of the things you heard here today and a lot of good words for, I think, the work that's been done thus far. But I guess I would just ask our staff, I think, we heard a lot about coordinated entry and I think the efforts being made, this goes more to item 52, and obviously the recommendation that we move some of the money that's currently been dedicated to segment steps forward for both the navigators, but also for the rapid rehousing. But I guess the coordinated entry piece of this and there was suggestions made, as I heard them, that the, now we were setting up a third, I guess, pathway or a parallel system. And if I heard one thing clearly when our visit to San Francisco last week was that looking at their triage shelter, but this, you know, the whole point, and you were there as well Cindy, that, and I don't know if you heard the comment, but that the coordinated entry was a real important piece for certainly San Francisco and that community and it's looking at its shelter system, its affordable housing, its entry into the system and that they had been working for some time, when I think we certainly this community have as well, but I think have gotten to, you know, a pretty good point thus far. Obviously, continued to work through some of the, you know, some of the rougher spots. But so I guess I would ask you, kind of your thoughts, and you heard the comments that I heard here today, and what about that?
So, the comments I heard at San Francisco was that they use, they place everyone that comes to the shelter on the coordinated entry path to resources from the continuum of care. I did not hear that they take folks from coordinated entry, and in fact, many coordinated entry systems do not encompass shelters. So, I may have heard that slightly different. I think there are currently likely more than three rails of how to get to services. And in fact, there is not a single place to go, period. Even if coordinated entry were the only game in town, there is no number, there is no place to go. Can we be compatible with a frequent user approach that really targets on an objective basis who is using the most expensive services and are homeless with a coordinated entry? I think that was one of the most promising comments I heard, that those are not incompatible, that they can, they can work together. And in fact, programs that are operating in Los Angeles, Santa Clara, et cetera, recognize the value of a frequent user approach to target resources. So, I think it would be important for us to work together. I think it would be important for us to contribute to the development of coordinated entry. We have, we have done some of that and we will continue to do that to make sure it's functioning for all of the continuum of care programs. There's new resources coming online through the loss of the Mather money and a new application that VOA was successful in, those have to integrate. So, there's a lot of issues right now for coordinated entry. There are many, many resources, most of those on page three, as well as other resources, are not in coordinated entry. So, I think it's a little bit not clear to say everything's in coordinated entry. A part of the continuum of care, HUD funding is, and a part of ESG Emergency Solutions Grant is, as they are required to be. HUD came out with new requirements. I think it's important that we all look together at what is working and what is not, especially in light of those new requirements, including a really short list, not a long queue that gives people no hope. And that's where I would think we could marry the approach of a really deeper prioritization than is currently occurring.
And who's going to be responsible for that?
That working together part or?
Oh, that's everybody's responsibility to work together, but who's going to be responsible for what you just said, though?
Which part? I'm sorry. For making them work?
Yeah, pulling that together.
We will, we will be happy to participate and lead that to make sure that the two, I think there's a much broader issue in that we have no clear pathway now to services in any of our systems. You know, the fact that people are assessed doesn't mean there's a clear path way to services. So, I think it's a broad issue that there's not a simple solution and we are more than happy to take leadership and work on that with SSF and others.
Well, and again, I do think that we need to, you know, to be a party to that, certainly SSF and, you know, cities and other social service providers and so forth. However, that comes, you know, I don't begin to say I even understand all those entry points, but I get what you're saying. I certainly heard the comments about being consumer-friendly, about coordinated entry, and I appreciate the distinction that you offered in what we heard in San Francisco. I guess, I would say that should be part of the, you know, it's part of the challenge for all of us. There's been work done to try to get there, but it may never be a perfect system, but I wouldn't want to lose sight of that. We go off and work on our, you know, frequent user piece of it and do some other things and, you know, we're doing, we're doing what you said you're going to do, but I think there's, you know, there's this broader picture and I think that's part of the collaboration coordination. And yet, people are busy, they're tasked with a lot of different things and they're working in the immediacy of homelessness or serving particular clients or folks in need. And yet, I think that's probably key to a framework that then provides, I think, a solid foundation for whoever, you know, is working in that system and whoever enters that system. And I think it could help to ensure quick attention to issues when there's the ability to serve, but also will allow us, I think, there's some questions that I heard Supervisor Kennedy ask a couple of speakers was, you know, as we collect data, as we know, and to your point you made earlier about pushing a button when you reach out to other partners that could help offer information, not just about data, but about real people in need. And so, I guess I would hope that as a part of this, there's a lot of work embedded in what's being offered here and proposed, but I, to me, that's a, that's a key piece and I would want to make sure we have focus on that. I don't necessarily put it on your shoulders, but obviously you're the homeless coordinator for kind of Sacramento. We have a very big, big role and big stake in this and you're going to bring a lot of, you know, resources with, you know, with decisions yet to come to the table. And I think part of that, though, is to, you know, be sure that, you know, folks that we need to reach are reachable, but also that they don't just get kind of put in the circuit and you're on some list somewhere. That's not, that doesn't work very well.
If I could circle back also to the rest of the SHRA resources and wiring those. We haven't talked at all about how folks will enter those programs, if you will, not exactly a program, but I think SHRA is interested in looking at that as well. And so, I think sitting down with all of the partners on all of the resources and wire them, wiring them as we can.
Okay. I guess I would ask maybe through you or to Nav that we be the convener for that and be taking that as one of our tasks as a part of this overall effort unless there's disagreement by my colleagues, but I think that's a, that's a key piece going forward.
Sure.
Okay.
Excuse me, Mr. Chair. Before you leave that, but I like to dovetail off.
Sure.
Your line of thinking there and your comments. I think your point is very well taken in terms of what I would take to be a statement about, you know, this Board's allegiance to our constituents, both the neighborhoods that deal with the impact of homelessness, but certainly the families, the individuals that are homeless themselves, they are as much our constituents as anyone else. My allegiance certainly is to making sure that we're operating on all, you know, all cylinders firing. I want to know from the county executive whether or not we are going to have a better understanding before June when we're asked to, you know, make some big decisions about taxpayer dollars to fortify these parts of the continuum we've been talking about this afternoon, whether or not we're going to have a clear or a foggy picture of coordinated entry, whether it's steps forward, doing it relative to some of the new elements that we're introducing with what's being proposed today or the other way around. Again, my allegiance isn't to agencies, it's to how best to accomplish the task. So, seems to me that that would be the logical thing to pursue, would have that clear picture before we're asked to commit millions of taxpayer dollars.
I mean, we will, we will work with SAC Step Forward, SHRA, and get as clear of a picture as we can prior to June.
I mean, maybe the response is that it's a refinement of what's being proposed today in terms of what the county feels, you know, what we feel we think we can do best, or it may be, you know, further discussions with, with others about the need for data and how best to have the dashboard that others talk about to understand where clients are going to be best served and which parts of the continuum at any given point in time. I just, I need to, I feel a need to, at this point, I'm going to have some of the comments later, to really chime in and stress the importance of understanding the system before we start committing large amounts of tax dollars.
Okay. Then I just had two other quick things. Spoke to you earlier this afternoon and I would like to see, using other, where we've already heard this afternoon, a more robust discussion about motel conversion, about, you know, there was, staff touched upon it certainly as related to, you know, how we might issue some bond capacity where the county then could be, either create some loans and/or capital for construction. Again, I don't know, you know, all the ins and outs of that. Obviously, we have some, you know, limitations, but it seems to me that whether it's converting and/or purchasing or, you know, participating in some way with certainly the affordable housing piece of this, and whether it's, you know, long-term supported housing or some sheltering, there's some opportunities. The marketplace offers them, again, I don't know, you know, what all it would take to do that. It's not just about having the money, it's obviously the practicalities of going out into the marketplace and acquiring properties and so forth, but to manage them long-term. Agency was able to do that over the course of many years, but some of the tools are still there, but money's not there. And so, I guess, Nav, I think in light of everything that's here, that's an important piece because I think that gets to some of the issues we hear about that really underlie our ability to strike quickly to help folks, but then what do you do in the long term? But we also know we've got some, you know, blights and properties or cancers in our neighborhood that could, you know, be adaptable, that could actually be turned around. And again, maybe we don't have to own it, but bring some capacity to the system. And so, I'm going to continue to stress that. And that, to me, you know, for that initial capital investment with partners and maybe private sector partners, maybe some of the non-profits or not-for-profits that are here in this room or others that are representing the community, that to me needs to be a piece that I think we need to maintain, folks. Focus, we're getting caught up in discussions about budget and what program we fund and how many, you know, beds are created and how many slots are created and so forth. That to me, though, this conversion piece or addressing those properties and trying to find some solution sets, needs to get some more focus. Again, I know we've been working on a lot of different fronts here, but I would just ask that. And lastly, I would just comment relates to, again, some of the long-term financing you've recommended, at least for our consideration, and it will come back in budget, you know, using general fund. It may be that we bring that conversation about the boomerang funds because that's actually, by what was quoted here, the lesser amount than what's being recommended out of the general fund, but it's an amount that will grow annually and it may be a way to, for this Board and certainly successor Boards, at least to have some connectivity to what once was, which no longer is, but could be as relates to having some definition around that because, again, I, you know, I know full well that general fund dollars can ebb and flow and we're going to see it this year, not unlike other years, and that when times get tough, then we have to look at, you know, all the resources, all the services to Supervisor Serna's point, there's never enough. But it may be that at least that source that becomes a source, I say dedicated in the sense that there's a recognition of the ties that that money flows from. So, I'd like us to take a look at that. Thanks. Okay. Let me, then I think there's no other questions and then let's go to comments and we'll entertain some motions here on both items 51 and 52. So, Mr. Serna, and then rest of the Board members are going to come right down the line if you like, so.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I'd like to thank both SHRA staff and our, and our staff, Cindy and Paul, Sergeant LaChelle and her staff from SHRA. I think over the last 45 days, there's been a very, very deliberate effort to really tease out quite a bit of detail since the last discussion we had with our colleagues from the city of Sacramento. At the time, I think there was some consternation about, expressed about not working faster, but as I think I recall saying in these chambers is that we necessarily had to give staff the time to be thorough and I think it's paid off. I think what we see today with both Board letters, both staff reports is some very thoughtful approaches to options which any decision-making body can appreciate in terms of big decisions. So, I first want to start with my thanks to staff for doing what I think is a very, very commendable job of providing this Board with the information we need to make these decisions. I want to, secondly, thank everyone that took time out of their busy schedules to be here today and certainly in meetings past to get us to this point. I think it's quite serendipitous, quite frankly, that we began down this path as a Board about this time last year because of growing concerns from our constituents that were calling us or emailing us or showing up at the end of Board hearings to express their discontent with the status quo. And I think what they were met with is agreement by this Board that the status quo is not acceptable. That has been an ongoing theme, I think, not just by this Board, but all of our local governments here in Sacramento County and throughout the region, that the status quo is unacceptable when it comes to dealing with this very complicated subject of homelessness in our communities. I think it's serendipitous that we now have a mayor in our largest city in the county that wasted no time to make this his centerpiece issue. And so, it really came along at the, at the right time as far as I'm concerned, even after we had established momentum to seek change and pursue some initiatives early last spring, some ideas, pursue some ideas that have really gotten us to this point where we have those options I just mentioned in front of us. So, didn't thank him before he left, but certainly in the potential, I want to give my, my thanks, sincerest thanks to Mayor Steinberg for his focused attention, continued attention on this subject and we certainly welcome his partnership to get to a place that we can be satisfied with eventually and that our constituents can join us. Guess I want to say that the full-service rehousing shelter idea, formerly low-barrier triage, is the one component apart, again, that I, throughout the last several months have been most focused on because of the nature of the district I represent and having the lower reach of the American River Parkway in the district and since being elected to this Board, dealing with the impacts of homelessness, again, both the human and social cost of it on the Parkway, almost on a daily basis. It really does consume a great deal of my time, my staff's time responding to constituents' rightful concerns about safety issues, garbage and human waste issues on the Parkway. It's completely unacceptable and the two are inextricably linked in terms of the condition of our Parkway and the ability to address homelessness in a satisfactory way. And so, for me, the full-service And so, for me, the full-service rehousing shelter really is that greatest missing link in our continuum, that if it is the will of this board to approve it, and we work out the siding eventually, and certainly the funding, will be, I think, one of the most pronounced additive aspects of what we do on the homelessness front anywhere in the region. If you think about it, and this is a really sad statement to say out loud, but I'm going to say it anyways, the city and the county of Sacramento have more infrastructure in place to shelter animals than we do people, if you think about it. We have a great animal shelter on Bradshaw, you know, the city has their shelter down on Front Street, but it really is a travesty that we don't have anything under our direct oversight, so I think, you know, with a full-service rehousing shelter, that would change, and it would be a change for the better, and it would, again, leave us actually more accountable to you, the public, for making sure that we have an effective means of entry into our continuum of care. So that's the part that, just like the other aspects, that excites me about what we're doing here today. I do want to share an idea, and I gave our county executive and our chair the heads-up before the meeting, and just to briefly share an idea that we might want to introduce, between now and the time that we actually appropriate funds in June and have the next steps of this conversation, and that is, this county remains the second-largest public employer, at least, second only to the, it's the second, it's second only to the state of California in terms of its employment. We have 12,000 people that work for this organization, and it occurred to me on the drive in today, coming in the back way through Bannon Street and seeing people, homeless folks flocking to different service organizations, that as the, one of the largest employers anywhere in the region, why aren't we also having a conversation right now about how we might have some element of our employment practices that prioritize formerly homeless, formerly chronically homeless? And I'm not sure what that number is, but, you know, we have so many different things that employees are responsible for in this organization, everything from, you know, street cleaning to the CEO's office and everything in between. It seems to me that there's ample opportunity to think carefully about how we might expand employment opportunities for those folks that are struggling to come out of homelessness, that are looking to be self-sufficient, and of course, we all know that to do that in large part, you need to have a source of income. So, to me, that's, that seems like a very appropriate adjunct to the conversation we've had today, so I'd like to encourage, along with the motion that hopefully will be made here shortly, I may do it myself, that we add that to our to-do list to explore how we might look at the organization itself, Sacramento County, as a resource to enhance employment opportunities for formerly chronically homeless. I think that's all I wanted to say. Again, thanks to everyone, especially the advocates, we have no shortage of terrific nonprofits here in our region, in our county, dedicated to helping different parts of the homeless population, whether it be St. John Shelter, or Win Youth Services, or Next Move, or VOA. We absolutely cannot do what we're trying to do without you. If you think about it, we rely so heavily on our network of shelters now, that's in one part why we, I think we're having this discussion, is we really need to find that capacity and have some skin in the game. Now's the time.
Okay, thanks, Bill. Patrick?
Thank you, Chair. I won't repeat everything that my colleagues have said, though I agree with what they have said. A couple of things, and I've already voiced much of this already, but I'll say again, I'm still, you know, I've been a supporter and believer in the triage center for a long time, regardless of what you call it. We had, Jeffrey was here earlier and said, "You should go down to San Diego." I did a couple of weeks ago and took a look at what they're doing, they're doing good stuff. I'm still a little concerned that we are tying the triage center, now the full-service rehousing shelter, to direct housing on-site, and Cindy made me feel a little better about that in her comments, but I want to be able to offer those services and then push people out to other housing as well, and not just make it a one-stop center, you get the triage and then you go to housing on-site, but make it available to homeless people who are going to go to a variety of different places, even emergency shelters. And, you know, within triage, Supervisor Serna, I see, you know, it as being more than simply looking at a person's medical issues and housing issues, but also looking at things like employment. I mean, I think a full service is just that, full service. I can see offering, you know, legal assistance to help people who have legal barriers that are keeping them from getting housing, and help them in that way, too. So I really see, want to be very creative, is, and I know that what we do here today, and what we do even in the next six months to a year, isn't going to be necessarily where we are in two years. We're going to continue to evolve, and we're going to fine-tune it, but I hope that we'll look at the full-service re, what is it called now?
Rehousing.
Rehousing Shelter. I'm going to go with triage. I hope that we will, you know, continue to see that that can play a bigger role than what I'm currently hearing, and maybe I'm mishearing. Couple of the other things I did talk about, I'd like to look at strategies going forward and get a little creative, I think Cindy used the word, that's where we can get creative with certain strategies. I think I would like to see, looking at a shared housing model, I've seen it work throughout the community, and I'd like to see that become a part of the conversation. And I also want to see that we don't skirt around the boomerang funds anymore, and we actually look at, there is a clear nexus there, and it did leave a hole, a hole that we can easily, you know, patch by making those a part of the ongoing conversation, and not have to revisit that discussion every time we look at budget, so. Just some of my, on the other hand, again, I didn't want to say I would repeat what my colleagues said, but, you know, I want to get that Supervisor of the Year certificate from staff one time, and just say that I too, you know, have to say that you guys did some amazing heavy lifting, I mean, from the work that SHRA did before the commission and then before us today. I thought that the report you did before SHRA's commission was one of the most balanced, well-thought-out staff reports I've seen in a very long time. And Cindy, and Paul, and, you know, everybody involved, shouldn't name names because you'll leave someone out, but, you know, you've all just done a great job of listening to us, listening to the community, and really making some hard calls, and so I really appreciate the work that you've done, so.
Thank you. They'll get shorter and shorter as it goes down the line, as you just absorb everything that's already been said, but I do want to repeat, thank you for all the work that was done. I know both SHRA staff and county staff have been under a lot of pressure to get this work done, and it's new work. It's, you know, I feel like we're taking a leap in a new direction by going after the chronically homeless, and I, you know, I'm somewhat concerned about that, because I don't want it to affect negatively the people that are easier to help, but I'm willing to take that leap with you. And now that you're not so completely wrapped up in this subject, LaShelle, I'd like to have some more help from you in putting together financial models on the motels. I haven't wanted to bug you about that, because you had a lot on your plate, but I am collecting information, and I'd like to have something together in the next month or so, so I can talk to people about it. So, thank you for this, again, for staff, for all this work, and I'm going to cross my fingers, I hope it works.
Very good.
Well, I just want to thank the staff, LaShelle, Paul, Cindy, and executive staff for, I guess this has been going on for quite a while, months, and it was a comprehensive report, it was very aggressive, it talks about addressing changes in funding that make it challenging for us, and shifting resources, and was very well done. I also want to echo what Supervisor Serna said regarding, we're listening, and we do have limited resources, and the needs are growing, and so it's not easy, the decisions that are made regarding the budget. This will be my first time through the budget process, and it'll be interesting to see how that all comes together. I did have a couple of things that came to my mind, there is a lot of community, local community outreach, there are the local heart organizations, and I want to thank Mr. Foley and SAC Steps Forward for, you know, the work that you've done with the local residents and businesses who really, and the faith-based community, who really want to make a difference. I wonder if there's a way that we can incorporate, you know, the concept of, rather than give them fish, teach them how to fish, teach our local nonprofits and all those people with a big heart, like Justin, who want to make a difference, how to be, how to organize those wraparound services so that the community is actually wrapping around these people and actually helping us make something happen. I also want to mention that District Four, I like the idea that you were looking in the unincorporated areas for resources and shelters. We do have homeless people in each of our areas that do not want to come, they don't want to go to a different city, they live in our city, they're part of our, like Phil said, they're my constituents. So, having more local resources makes it easier on our police and sheriff that are working out in the outside areas of the county. The 150 vouchers, LaShelle, the work that you did was just incredible, because you took a really hard situation where we were concerned about fair housing, and are we going to be able to prioritize, how do you prioritize one and exclude the others, but you didn't exclude the others, and I really liked the way you did that, and I was, I thought that was magical, the way you made that happen, congratulations on that. And then, I just want to quickly mention regarding the bonds. There was some mention of bonds in the report, and the fact that, you know, maybe an $8 million bond at 6% amortized over 30 years costs the taxpayers $280 million, or something like that. The challenge, I, you know, it's, I'd have to think about that, the concern I have is that we don't know, you know, with homelessness, it seems like we can never just find the answer, there isn't one answer, and so if you, you know, if you establish, you know, debt over, around one solution that doesn't work over time, now you're paying the bill on that while you're trying to move on. And so, my input relating to the bonds would be, can we look at, I like Supervisor Peter's ideas about the motels, I know it costs money to rehab and do all that, but are there facilities that are already there that we can utilize and make those work? And I just, I guess with that, this is a good start, and in concept, I support moving forward, and thank the staff for a lot of, I know a lot of hard work went into that, so, those are my comments, thank you.
Okay, and just before we entertain a motion here, then, I would just thank my colleagues, certainly for your patience, and I think not only the input that we give when we come together collectively, but certainly individually, as we channel what we hear from folks in the, you know, the communities that we represent throughout the county of Sacramento, whether they be in cities or unincorporated communities. I would just acknowledge, too, that we received several pieces of correspondence from business partners, from other interested parties, certainly groups and organizations that advocate and provide services, but also those that I think recognize, as has been said here many times, the issue, the problems, the folks who are not only enduring the immediate situation of homelessness, but also then the impacts to their community, to their neighborhood, to their business. And so I think what we see today, certainly in the work that's been brought forward by county staff, and by SHRA staff, and leadership in both of those groups, but certainly other partners, and I guess I would just say that I appreciate, you know, the interest that the city of Sacramento, certainly the mayor and the council there, other city councils, I know that, I had the opportunity with both SHRA and county staff to visit both the Ranch Cordova and Elk Grove City Councils while they were in session, we had correspondents and representatives from both of those entities, I know we have a representative from Ranch Cordova here today, who's been here through the entirety of the hearing, and I believe my colleague Supervisor Frost did outreach to both Citrus Heights and Folsom, and I know we, again, county staff reached out to both the city of Galt and the city of Iltin. And so it's been an inclusive process, one, obviously, it's had a lot of moving parts, but I think reflects, obviously, the depth of the issue, and certainly the breadth of the solution sets that have been suggested, but it's not all about money or resources, that's obviously key to doing the number of things we want to achieve, but I think it's the will and the commitment to look at things differently and recognize that each of those circumstances that we're talking about, as it relates to individuals and families, and their particular needs, they require a good deal of attention, some are easier than others, as Ms. Peters said, but I think that there's an opportunity here to do something that's going to, you know, move us in a direction that I hopefully can all be proud of, again, it'll be one where the success may be measured in many different ways, but knowing that we can help folks and do it hopefully in a cost-effective manner, but address some of the housing problems, but also the challenges that folks face in their, in their particular sets of circumstances in their own lives, and so I'm certainly encouraged by that, and I want to thank Nava and LaShelle, and certainly folks from, you know, from the cities for their collaborative effort on a governmental basis, but also our nonprofit partners, the advocates, and the folks who've been here on many occasions over the years to advocate for allocation of resources, but also for us to hopefully do things that will make a difference in our, in our community as a whole, but certainly in our parts of the world in this great county. So with that, I'll entertain a motion, we can take both items 51 and 52 together, I believe, since we sit both as the housing authority and the board supervisors as it relates to the motions before, so.
Chair?
Yes, Mr. Serna.
I'd like to move that we adopt the resolution that SHRA has prepared for the board's consideration, and then my understanding is that the recommended action on 52 is more general direction, is it not?
There's four items that you're going to be approving, it's general direction, you correct?
Correct, that we give staff the general direction, affirmative general direction that is detailed in those board letter under those four items.
Correct.
Okay, and before we vote, I'd ask to indulge me one last time, I would just want to make sure we thank Ann Edwards and her staff, especially Eduardo, Megan, Victor, who else? Julie.
Everybody seated up on that side of the room.
Yeah, these are, these are all.
A couple scattered out there, mostly over there, I don't, what is about this right side of?
I don't know, they tend to hide in the shadows up there, but these are all, for those of you that don't know, these are all our committed Department of Human Assistance staff, and let me tell you, they are indeed some special people, especially with what we saw this last few months with the wet and the cold weather, and them going above and beyond to make sure that people that were literally living, in some cases, without even tents, had a warm, dry place to stay, so. I want to make sure that before we do vote, that we acknowledge the hard work and contribution of our dedicated Department of Human Assistance staff.
Great.
So that's my motion.
Bill, to clarify, you mentioned 1 through 4, were you talking about just item 52?
No, we're taking 51 and 52 together.
You moved 51.
That's correct.
I thought we were, but you only mentioned 1 through 4, so I just wanted to.
1 through 4 and 52.
We're giving general direction on 1 through 4.
Okay, so we have item 51, the recommendations embedded in there with vouchers, and a resolution, and then item 52, the four points of direction.
Thank you, I just needed to clarify there.
Good, no good. And Supervisor Frost?
I just wanted to, on item 51, I wanted to request, because I know in that report, it talks about 150 vouchers the first year, another 150 the next year, another 150 the next year, but with the specific request included, that we're reporting back frequently.
next year, but with the specific request included that we're reporting back frequently because I think that's ambitious. If we can't put them to work, why give 450 basically, or?
That's correct. One of the things that we should have mentioned is that we do plan on coming back to you twice a year to give you a status update on what's happening with 51, what's happening with 52, so that way rolling into next year's budget in June, you will have an idea what the progress has been.
Yeah. Thank you. Yeah.
Okay.
I'll second the motion.
All right. We have a motion and a second, and clearly understood that we adopted recommendations on Item 51 on behalf of the Housing Authority and Redevelopment Agency, and then giving direction under the four items you added to your motion and relative to taking a look at the employment aspect.
Yeah, with frequent report backs.
Okay. And I think you noticed some other questions that come out of that that obviously will be embedded in the report.
Yes.
Okay. If there's nothing further, then please vote.
He unanimously spoke.
Five oh, as good as it gets. So, okay. With that, thank you all very much. We have some other items that have gone on agenda, off agenda. Okay. Please exit quietly. We're still going to be in session. We have.
Good luck.
Please exit quietly. We're still in session. Shh. Okay. Give you a moment to exit.
I just don't want that.
Sometimes the gap comes down on you.
Yeah, I know. That's right. Okay. Okay. We have one more regular scheduled agenda item, and we have speakers that, we have a joint request by a number of speakers, and I'm going to allocate a block of time. We also have two other off agenda speakers. I think it's Gina Knight and Karen Klinger, so we will take all those comments before we move to adjournments and supervisor comments. So let's take the last action item, which is Item 53. Flo, if you could very quickly.
Okay. Item 53 are your nominations. You are continuing to April 25th, Fair Oaks Cemetery District, Sacramento County Alcohol and Drug Advisory Board. You are continuing to May 9th Cemetery Advisory Commission, Cordova Community Planning Advisory Council, County Service Area 4C Delta, Delta Citizens Municipal Advisory Council, In-Home Supportive Services Advisory Committee, Maternal Child and Adolescent Health Board, North Highlands Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council, Orangeville Community Planning Advisory Council, Sacramento County Redevelopment Successor Agency Oversight Board, Sacramento County Treasury Oversight Committee, Southeast Area Community Planning Advisory Council, and the Vineyard Area Community Planning Advisory Council. And for your items today, your first is Adult and Aging Commission. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, we have the chiefs have interviewed. Recommendations are to nominate James Donovan, Linda Kingsbury, Emmanuel Petrasor, Petrasor and Marie Sasan, General Public Representatives, and then to continue the remainder to April 25th, 2017.
Okay. For Arden Arcade Community Planning Advisory Council, Supervisor Peters?
Please continue to April 11th.
Okay. Next is the Carmichael Old Foothill Farms Community Planning Advisory Council. Ms. Peters?
I'd like to reappoint David Peterson and nominate Theodore Walter to the CPAC and continue the remainder to April 25th.
Next is the Children's Coalition. Mr. Natoli?
Yes, the chiefs have interviewed, and they recommend Andrew Keller for public consumer seat and Danielle Cullum for public consumer seat as well, and then continue the remainder to April 25th.
And Disability Advisory Commission, Mr. Natoli?
Recommend to continue that until April 11th, 2017. There's an interview pending.
Equal Employment Opportunity Advisory Committee?
Continued April 11th, 2017. Interview pending.
I have reappointing Michael Kraft.
Oh, Michael Kraft is that, I didn't.
Or maybe I didn't hear you.
Yeah, no, I didn't note that. I just, I had, as it comes, I guess we nominate Michael Kraft and then continue the other one. There's an interview pending, so I wasn't sure of my notes here.
Okay, so we're nominating Michael Kraft and continuing to April 11th?
Right.
Okay. Fair Oaks Community Planning Advisory Council, Ms. Peters?
I'd like to reappoint Harry Azar.
Okay. And Public Health Advisory Board?
Okay. The chiefs have reviewed these, recommend nominating Martha Moon at the Public Health Professional category, along with Farla Kaufman likewise in Public Health Professional category, and then also recommending Emmanuel Petrasor in the health seat, and then close the filing for the community member, continue to April 11th, please.
We did just nominate Mr. Petrasor to Adult and Aging. Can he serve on two commissions? Is there any conflict there? Assuming it's the same person?
Yeah, I did too. I noted that, so I don't know. I don't know if anybody coordinated that or not.
I'll follow up with.
Why don't we do that? So, yeah, those are both nominations, so if we get some clarification, we aren't making the appointment today, but let's.
The nomination, correct.
Yeah, let's figure that, let's figure that out, yeah.
And I'll follow up before the adoption at the next meeting.
Yeah, good.
Okay, and then for Realinda Alberta Community Planning Advisory Council?
I nominate Suzie Shields.
Okay. And then Sacramento Housing and Redevelopment Commission?
I'd like to reappoint Michael Alkale.
Okay. And then that concludes your nominations.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Okay, we have some folks that have been waiting very patiently in the audience, and we can denote most of them by their red attire, and with that, we have off agenda items that I'd like to speak to, and since we have a group, I'm going to allot 15 minutes for, we have like seven speakers signed up, and so we would do under a block of time, so I have them in a particular order. I'll call you in that order, so if you give more or less time, I'm going to put 15 minutes on the clock for all of you to do the presentation. You don't have to use all that, but it should be sufficient, so. Okay, with that, we have Jana Lepage, and Debbie Nussbaum first, and Angela Cox, Hino. So let me get the clock set here.
Well, thank you for hearing us in this late hour this evening. I am Jana Lepage. I'm an RN Case Manager in California Children's Services. I am a three-decade employee in county service, and we are here to talk to you today about the state of nurses in the county of Sacramento. Everyone has an opinion on the role of government, and that was very evident on the, on the proceedings we had just witnessed. There will always be more demands on government than available resources. Therefore, you as leaders will always be burdened with making the difficult decision. However, rallying for county nurses is not one of those difficult decisions. The county is in the healthcare business, like it or not, and this is not about us as individuals. This is about who we are on the county's behalf. If we are to be leaders in our field and valuable problem-solving partners for the county and their issues with safety and probation and correction, child protective services, maternal-child health, homelessness and public health, then we have to be able to attract new graduates to experienced professionals. Today, the county is 30% below the market rate in nurses' salaries in our area. We are not asking to lead the market or even to be in the top 10%. However, being at 30% below market simply does not allow us to help you recruit the type of individual that will help team up to find solutions, solutions that are needed to meet present and future complex healthcare challenges. We as nurses can be your best partners in creating the solutions our community deserves. However, we cannot do this when we can't compete for the best and the brightest in our profession. And are you aware that nurses were voted the most honest and ethical of professionals for 15 consecutive years by the American public by the Gallup poll? Nurses are voted over medical doctors and law enforcement officers. Nurses draw on that trust to engage with our clients, to improve their health, and advocate for them to improve for the quality of care in this country. We are in historical times as far as change in our healthcare. The shift has begun from the acute care setting to the community setting like never before, and the shift is coming fast. The county needs to respond. Don't just follow the trend, be the trend. Give your county nurses leverage so that our clients will continue to receive evidence-based practice and standard of care to help them meet their optimal healthcare needs. Thank you.
Thank you, Jana. Okay, next is Debbie, and Debbie's followed by Angela, and then followed by Kelly.
Good afternoon. My name is Debbie Nussbaum, and I'm a public health nurse with the In-Home Supportive Services IHSS program. I've been a nurse with Sacramento County for over 27 years, and I was a hospital nurse for over five years before I came to work for this county. I make home visits for the elderly and disabled residents of Sacramento County who are IHSS recipients. The clients are referred to me by the social workers in this program because the clients' medical needs are not being met. All of the clients are low-income, and for many, English is not their primary language. I perform health and safety assessments in the homes, and I advocate for my clients and help coordinate their medical care. I collaborate with the healthcare system, including insurance companies, doctors' offices, pharmacies, rehab facilities, hospitals, home health, as well as many community organizations to ensure the health and safety needs of my clients are met. Of the nurses currently working for Sacramento County, approximately 40% could retire today, and in four years, the number jumps to 70%. I have seen a lot of turnover of nurses within the county in the last couple of years, and approximately 75% of the new nurses coming to Sacramento County as public health nurses do not have the required hospital experience that I had, and I'm concerned the county will not be able to recruit experienced public health nurses because the wages are not competitive. I'm not really speaking for myself when I ask for a wage increase, but for help recruiting the new nurses that will take over for me when I retire. The vulnerable population we serve deserves the opportunity to work with experienced nurses. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, Debbie.
Good afternoon, supervisors, and thank you for the opportunity to give voice to concerns from our nurses. My name is Angela Cox, and I have been employed as a public health nurse here in the county for nearly 22 years. For the majority of those years, I took pride knowing we nurses were providing excellent and safe care to the vulnerable communities. In the difficult years of 2008 and '09, when budget cuts were implemented, unfortunately, nursing lost 20% of its positions. To the amazement of many, those remaining nurses stretched thin, took on more and more, working diligently to provide that same level of quality care to a county whose population was growing all the larger. In 2014, overworked county nurses began noticing that more and more nursing positions were being filled now with non-county staff, non-county registry staff. Shortly thereafter, it was noticed that specialized nursing duties that require licensed staff were now being reassigned to non-licensed staff. When county staff expressed concern to nursing management, the response given was that management could no longer get experienced RNs to sign on with the low pay that the county offered. Unfortunately, the substitution of highly-trained nurses for those without the proper licensure or adequate experience has not been devoid of consequence. Sure enough, morale significantly worsened as decisions by those without the right knowledge base went from bad to worse. Management began to ignore directives stipulated by program funding from the state of California, putting entire programs at risk for cuts. At this present time, not a month goes by without a fellow nurse bringing to the committee of professional performance evidence of medical error or omission of sound judgment. These errors are being made because these new nurses to the county lack the required skill set, once mandatory, to do the job in a safe and prudent manner. The skill set threshold has been lowered in order to fill these underpaid positions. The few seasoned nurses remaining try to remedy these errors as much as possible when they come to our attention. With such few experienced staff remaining and with nursing management at top, deaf to the concerns of its senior nurses, it remains very plausible that other mistakes are being missed. Please do what you can, honorable supervisors, to make our wages equitable to basic local standards, so as to bring better qualified nurses with their valuable skill set back to our county. This will be a beginning step to help protect your nurses and the patients they serve. Thank you.
Thanks, Angela. Next is Kelly, then followed by Sharon Brown, and then Eva Simpson-Dill.
Hi, you guys. Thank you very much for the opportunity to be up here with you. I really appreciate it. My name is Kelly Ward. I'm a public health nurse with Sacramento County Primary Care Clinic. I work as a triage nurse and do navigation services for the healthcare for the homeless program. I also worked with Adult Protective Services prior to that, serving the elderly and dependent adults within our community. What I currently do in the healthcare with the homeless program is we assess clients for medical urgency, focusing on primary prevention efforts to keep as many of them outside of the emergency room as possible. It's extremely expensive that they're consistently using that as a revolving door. So our focus is to navigate them towards primary care services and ensure that those linkages are met. We also are responsible for screening for communicable disease, specifically for our program tuberculosis screening. This tuberculosis screening is what grants homeless shelter clearance, and getting into the shelters is going to be lowering the number of homeless people camping out at the rivers and out in our local parks. They need to be cleared of communicable disease before they can be housed in large populations. Without the shelter, we all know that the human body can only take so much. We've seen this more recently with the Sentinel outcomes, the documented 87 homeless people recorded in 2016 as deceased by the county coroner's office out on the streets, one of which was a 28-year-old pregnant homeless woman who lost her life and the life of her unborn child because she was living on the streets and was hit by a car. The other two homeless men that died on the steps of City Hall within the same week just goes to show that, where our needs are. When I worked with Adult Protective Services, the life of a community member was in danger. I, I served a woman. She was mute. She could not move. She could not eat by herself or advocate for herself. Her only advocate was her husband, and he loved her very dearly, but he didn't have the medical background to understand the urgency of her situation. I saved that woman despite the resistance of her husband, which was encouraged further by EMS personnel who do not have nursing backgrounds, but who sometimes do think that they know better than nurses or physicians. This patient had a pulmonary embolism. Had it not been my nursing assessment, she would have died that day. I bring up these scenarios because the things that your nurses are doing out in the community are so extremely vital and critically important for primary prevention. The assessments we do save lives. They keep the community safe from disease outbreaks. They keep more people without homes inside temporary shelter and outside of the view of your parks across the street. Public health nurses are responsible for several duties: monitoring for communicable disease outbreaks, supporting pregnant teenagers, reducing mortality rates of African-American infants, responding to emergent child abuse crisis situations, and adult and elder abuse crisis situations. My question to you guys is, do you want to prevent Ebola and herpes and syphilis outbreaks in the community? Do you want to save infants from being dumped in garbage cans by terrified mothers who lack the support and the means to care for the children? Do you want to stop hearing on the news that another child was murdered by its mother's boyfriend? Would you like to know that if there's a public disaster, like the Oroville Dam breaking, that there are qualified, trained medical providers that will be dispatched to save you? The way you do that is by educating and empowering the nursing force that you have and providing a fair contract whose benefits aren't 20 to 30% below all surrounding competitive markets. Failing to do so and surviving on using expensive registry nurses and enticing new grads, who I promise you will move on to higher benefits and higher pay, will do nothing but cost the taxpayers more money, continue to promote system dysfunction, and continue to promote a turnover culture that digs us deeper into a hole instead of out of it. What we offer as nurses in your, in this community is not something that can legally be deferred to an unskilled employee, medical assistant, or office assistant. The focus of public health nursing is to promote primary prevention, to get people set up with primary care services so it limits the fragmented care that they're receiving when they're in and out of random urgent cares in ER departments with no follow-up. We need you to help keep us strong and to keep this mission going.
Thank you, Kelly. Okay, Sharon, and then Eva. Hi. Hi, Sharon.
Good afternoon, board of supervisors. My name is Sharon Brown. I have worked as a registered nurse for over 39 years. Seventeen of these years, I have worked for Sacramento County in the Department of Health and Human Services in the Public Health Division. I stand before you as one of 140 RNs in Sacramento County, serving the 1,418,788 people in Sacramento County per the 2016-17 census. That is 10,134 constituents per RN. Lot of people. Sacramento County registered nurses are providing care, coordinating services in the county correctional facilities, mental health areas, and at least 16 public health programs. A few of these programs are for the infant health, earned infant health, communicable diseases, public health nursing services, child protective services, adult protective services, and, as was stated, rightly involved in the homeless program, which was interesting for today. Sacramento County nurses are also trained to respond to local and national emergencies as well as disasters. We are considered first responders, just like anyone else. Each area of nursing where a registered nurse works has a story to tell of how the Sacramento County RN has improved the quality of life and maybe even saved the life of an individual. Sherri Heller, Director of the DHHS, in the December 29, 2016 issue of The Pulse, related the story of Carol Tucker, RN, public health nurse, in the Nurse Family Partnership Program, who saved the life of a baby boy. This was an unscheduled visit. Ms. Tucker happened to be in the neighborhood of her patient and decided to check in on the baby and the family. When she got there, the baby was not breathing. Ms. Tucker called 911 and initiated CPR. She's a trained CPR nurse. The baby boy was revived, saved, and is currently thriving today and meeting his developmental milestones. This is who a Sacramento County RN is. She goes above and beyond. My long-term commitment to Sacramento County is not unique. Forty-five percent of the 140 RNs in the county of Sacramento have devoted 10 years or more to public service. Forty percent of these 140 RNs are eligible for retirement today, me being one of them, and 70% of these 140 RNs within the next two to three years. Who will be filling these positions? Retention and recruitment of qualified RNs to fill current open positions as well as future openings is crucial to the continuation of all nursing services in Sacramento County. California Nurses Association Sacramento County has been in contract negotiations since April 2016 with the county of Sacramento. This is soon one year. The economic package that Sacramento County has proposed, as well as the added cost to the nurse of an increased pension payment, the proposed wage increase of approximately 1% yearly is disgraceful, and it's unacceptable. Today, you as a board of supervisors, this morning, made the proclamation for the National Public Health Week for the county of Sacramento. I think that's ironic. How ironic is that? Without a competitive working environment and wages to recruit and retain registered nurses, National Public Health Week may become just that for Sacramento County: just a proclamation. Thank you.
Thanks, Sharon. Okay, Eva, they left you three seconds, but I'm gonna give you a couple minutes, so, okay?
I appreciate that.
Okay, all right. You're the last speaker.
I can talk fast, but not that fast.
No problem. No problem. I'm gonna reset it for two minutes. Go ahead and introduce yourself.
Thank you. So, good afternoon to distinguished board members and Mr. Chair. So, my name is Eva, and I'm a nurse with Adult Protective Services. I have a special focus on the development of the disabled. Some of them meet the most vulnerable in our county, and they very often have absolutely nobody to speak for them. Sometimes their family is unwilling or unable, but again, we service those that absolutely don't have a voice for themselves. So I wanted to speak today about the priorities and where the governing body chooses to allocate its resources, and funding speaks volumes for that body's priorities. Sacramento County is currently looking at a nurse staffing crisis, and therefore, a healthcare and safety crisis for these most vulnerable populations that have been mentioned here so far. It used to be that the county had a very competitive advantage to hiring skilled workforce and were able to justify a lower hourly wage because they were offered great medical coverage and good pension plans. Unfortunately, times have changed. With austerity measures eroding medical benefits at higher cost and pension reform forcing employees to pay more into their pensions, the county's competitive advantage has deteriorated. Private employers of nurses, such as Kaiser Dignity Health, are offering PEPRA competitive pensions and employer-paid health coverage for both employees and family, all the while having an hourly wage which has far outpaced that of the county. It's been mentioned before that they often earn 30% more than us. That's an entry-level wage. Once you've worked for them 10, 20, 15, 30 years, you're gonna see 70 to 80% higher wages, and often, much, much higher. Their ceiling goes way higher than ours. When looking at the top wage earners in nursing, they're not gonna want to come to Sacramento County as an employee. When comparing to neighboring competitive and comparable counties, we are still 20 to 25% less than comparable counties. This has led the county into a position of facing a perfect storm scenario, wherein the county cannot recruit experienced nurses and struggles to recruit and retain new nurses. In February 2016, the county claimed it had nearly 30 vacant nursing positions they couldn't fill. From 2013 to 2016, the turnover rate was nearly 40%. This perfect storm is exacerbated by the fact that 40% of all the nurses can retire. You can look around this room. You can see that many of us are ready, if not today, very soon. So if the county's current wage proposal is woefully inadequate and cannot competitively advantage, it doesn't resolve the staffing crisis, and it could promote and assure that the perfect storm comes to pass, as nurses would be worse off due to these increased proposals, the increased cost. The county has repeatedly affirmed its expanding and deepening resolve to provide healthcare services to the most vulnerable, but who will provide that care when the county no longer has enough nurses to provide the care to this most vulnerable population? And it's time for the county to put its money where its claims and priorities are. It's time for the county to truly care for the most vulnerable, and it's time for the county to have a competitive wage so the county can recruit and retain these valuable nurses. Thank you.
Thank you, Eva. I want to thank all of you for being here today, certainly sitting through a very long hearing, but certainly thank you for your work and for your expressions, obviously of concern, not only about what happens tomorrow when we go out to provide services to the community, but obviously looking to the future as the workforce continues to move to a point where folks are going to retirement, we're trying to recruit and retain people like yourselves who provide those services to, as you said, many vulnerable people, but certainly to the general population. So we'll take those into consideration, and I know we're getting an update on our labor status, probably as soon as tomorrow. We have a special session on labor, talk about, you know, where we are, not just with nurses, but with certainly all of our bargain units. And again, I know some of you have visited with me in the past. I've shared that with the county executive. I think some of the same concerns that were expressed here are certainly were shared in my conversation with you, and we'll take those into account. We can't act, obviously, today on what you've brought forth, but appreciate you being here and alerting us all of the concern and the ongoing issues that we confront, both in providing for public health, but certainly in dealing with the contract that affects you and your fellow members and those in the future. So thank you for being here today. Okay, we do have some other off-agenda speakers. We have two. We have Gina Knight, and we also have Karen Klinger.
Gina here?
Gina. Oh, you were part of that? Okay, I didn't know. Oh, where you speak? Yeah, you say? Did you?
I just wanted to know, my husband used to work as a math teacher.
Okay, we'll get you to the microphone very quick again. I didn't...
I just wanted to say hello. I'm a nurse. This is actually my second occupation. I was actually a math teacher at Galt High.
Okay. You look familiar.
I just want you to know that we do make a difference. I have, just in the short year I've worked for you guys, found drug errors that the nurses either would have been given. One was 100 units of heparin versus 10. Didn't fill the order. Talked to the person. Talked to somebody who wasn't a nurse, had a really tough time making them understand why this was important. The same with a hormone shot. It was, again, too much dosage, and that would have been given by a mother who probably wouldn't have had the sense to go ahead and check it. So we really do make a difference, and I just wanted to let you know. Thank you.
Thank you, Janet. Okay. Gina got the last word for the nurses today, so, okay, thanks. All right. With that, then, I'm gonna turn to Karen Klinger. Karen's the last person to sign up on an off-agenda item as well, so, Karen?
Thank you. Long time. No see?
Good to see you.
Thank you, Chair, and totally members of the board. I have legislation that I have a great concern about. I no longer see, the process for legislation no longer comes before the board from what I'm used to seeing in the past, and I really appreciated the way legislation was presented. It gave the people an opportunity to see what was out there, what the board was looking at, what you supported, what you were opposing, what bills you were creating. The bills I'm going to give you today are ones that will not only add to the homelessness, and it will not only add to the cost that the county will have to pay. With realignment, that was a huge issue of distributing illegals into, or I should say, criminals into the public communities, and we see it today with all of the break-ins, and we don't know for sure who they are, but we have way too much of it in our neighborhoods. Senate Bill 54 de Leon, sanctuary state, huge concern for me. What is a sanctuary state? Sanctuary cities, sanctuary counties, now the state. This means open borders, welfare state. I don't know what you think about this bill. I see it as a national type of a replacement for Germany, for France, for European countries that allow anybody to come over their borders. We don't know who will step over that border, and a lot of the homeless could be the very people who are stepping over the border. They're undocumented. We don't know who they are. We don't know their cultures. Senate Bill 6. I'll give a list of this because I think it's important. Free legal services from state for illegals. Well, who do you think the state is going to drop the cost down to? It'll be the counties throughout California. Senate Bill 29, Rudy Laura, restraint on law, legal law enforcement agencies on how they contract and detain illegals. This is really the removal of the safety for the people. I don't care what culture you are, if you're undocumented, you will not have the services of the police because this will remove the police from being able to maybe call ICE because somebody from who knows where, could be Mexico, it could be international, wherever you go. Senate Bill 31, Laura, removes government entities from compiling data information based on religious belief, practice, affiliation, national origin, or ethnicity. Now, all of these are of huge concern to me. We had 10, there were, at one point, 10,000 refugees that were released into California. We have, my neighbors, neighbors of mine, are asking for different pieces of furniture, toys, and everything. You wonder where housing goes? It's going to these very people that are not documented, and they're not even made, these units, our housing units, are not even made available for the very citizens that probably have paid their taxes. Interest rates will be rising. Those who took variable interest rate mortgages, you'll see more homeless on the streets. You will not stop homelessness. It hasn't stopped since I've been a kid, so it's certainly not going to do anything but increase.
Karen, you can conclude. We're almost three and a half minutes.
I greatly appreciate that. I have two others, and then I do have a bill that I really want you to support. I will give a copy of this to the clerk.
Please do that.
So she can make copies of this.
Okay.
But Senate Bill 18, which is Children and Youth Bill of Rights, this bill removes parental rights in the best interest of their children, and it does insist on home visits, which child protective services supervisors are being sued. This bill is just going to increase the duties and your responsibilities. Senate Bill 1146, Laura, bans religious and pro-life organizations from requiring employees to be pro-life practiced. Now, the one I support, and I support this bill because I have a daughter who, excuse Senate Bill 1279, belly fever, belly fever, salus. This hasn't been heard yet, probably be heard next week. Belly fever, I am asking, the bill doesn't go far enough, I am asking that every county, every city in California supports this bill to allow citizens to become aware of something that appears like it's nothing, but it can be camouflaged. You can think you have pneumonia, which my daughter thought she had after walking in an area close to the border of Mexico. A week later, she was so sick, had no energy whatsoever. She went to the doctor, and the doctor gave her an antibiotic, two, two CPACs. That didn't work, so now, the doctor, after that time went by, the doctor gave her amoxicillin. Now she's getting more and more drugs, which is making her body immune system probably worthless at this point. Now, the third medication antibiotic that she was given was a horse pill. She said, "Mom, it was so big," a horse pill, extremely strong antibiotic, two of those. Through this process, months went by. Her doctor now is telling her that she, it's all in her head. It's all in her head. She's an executive. She has no time to have it all in her head. She needed to get better. Sorry about that.
That's okay. I know, Karen. It's very personal, but kind of got to conclude here if you could, so.
Now, her doctor encourages her to go to a doctor in San Diego who will finalize what the problem is. Now she's told she has cancer. The long story of this, after almost a year, she is still on heavy medication. After a year, at all of this stress and $20,000 of her own money, she finds out she has belly fever. Belly fever is something that we cannot wait for Assembly Bill 1279 to be heard, for it to be diagnosed, for medication to be provided, and then 5% of each county needs to report there's this problem before any doctors and people become aware of it. We have, how many people just visited the American River Parkway? 800,000. And do you know that they could be visiting Southern California or other areas where those spores, where that fungus is kicked up? With all this rain, you will see more and more reports in the southern and central parts of California that will give people belly fever, and I hope that is not one of you. There's just one last bill that I hope you pay attention to, and it's permanent sales, permanent new taxes and fees. It's Senate Bill 1, Jim Beal, and that has to do with transportation funding. Thank you.
Thanks, Karen. Good to see you again, and all the best to your daughter.
Sorry.
That's okay. It's all right. And you'll get us that information, and we'll take a look, have our folks take a look at that legislation, so, I hope your daughter gets better. Okay, that's all I had then for folks. Jeff, we already had the hearing. Thanks for coming back. And with that, then, let me go to county exec comments and then supervisor comments. I do have at least one in German.
We have one revision to tomorrow's agenda. Robin?
Subsequent to the posting of the initial agenda, we've, something's come to our attention regarding an existing litigation, so we'll need to add that tomorrow. It's Hardesty Schneider et al. versus County of Sacramento, U.S. District Court, Eastern Division, case number 210CV02414KJMKJN.
Okay, very good. All right, that has been noticed within the 24-hour, and so we'll have that for tomorrow's agenda. Okay, anything else, Mr. Gil? Okay, supervisor's comments? I do have one in German, and if you'll bear with me for a moment.
Supervisor, I just want to let you guys know that I did find out that Emmanuel Petrusor can be on both boards, P-HAB and the Adult and Aging Commission.
Okay, that's, those are nominations today, so we'll come back for the consideration. Thank you for following up the flow. Okay, I'd like to, today, as we adjourn in memory of Elsie Mae Davis, who passed away a few days ago on March 16, 2017. Elsie was born to Francis and Lydia Mack on October 5, 1927, at her grandparents' hotel stage stop in Oakland, Oregon. She attended elementary and high school in Elkton, Oregon, before she headed off to business college in Eugene. Her desire was to teach school, and she enrolled at Oregon State University, where she earned her Bachelor of Science degree in business and a Master's degree in education. While at Oregon State, she met her husband, B. Carl Davis, and they married in 1952. They were blessed with three children, Cheryl, David, and Jim. You may recognize Cheryl as being a member of my staff, been a longtime member of District V staff. Her life achievements were varied and many. While Carl... While Carl attended Cornell University, she would teach business courses at the local high school during the day, and at night, she typed the theses for college students in order to earn money for the family of four. Even with all this, she had time to be an active member in her children's education and growth. She served as a PTA member, homeroom mom. She sewed children's clothing, and also Barbie dresses, wrote weekly letters to her mother and father back home, and the list went on and on. She believed in family, and they felt that the grandparents should know their grandchildren. Thus, every summer, she and the children would drive from New York to Oregon to spend the summer at the ranch. When Jimmy arrived, the trips were from Illinois to Oregon, a much shorter trip. In the 1980s, Carl and Elsie owned a commercial apple orchard in Yakima, Washington. When he passed, she managed and operated the orchard until 2000, when she moved back to Oregon Ranch to take up a different farming adventure. She would later move here to Sacramento and resided in Elk Grove and with her daughter here in Sacramento in latter years. She loved the outdoors. She helped others. She loved visiting and caring for those in need, traveled the world, including the Antarctica with her daughter Cheryl, and spending time with her family, which now includes the daughter-in-laws, Reenie and Cindy, and granddaughter Jasmine, Melody, and Lacy. In early April, Elsie would be laid to rest next to two of her favorite people, her father, Francis Mack, and her son-in-law, Gabe Benengas. And again, I know that certainly, I had the opportunity to know Cheryl's mom, and she was a very gracious lady, but was very plainspoken, and had very strong opinions about things, but certainly was a great support for her daughter Cheryl, and I'm sure for the rest of the family. So, it's with our condolences and sympathies certainly to Cheryl and to her family that we, today, I'd ask we adjourn in memory of Elsie Mae Davis. Any other adjournments? If not, then we will adjourn, and we'll be back in session tomorrow for closed session items at 2:00 PM in the afternoon. Thanks.